Mail to you, I understand there's something that was passed around the room. So from what was mailed to you, the cash in our account of 1,988,536.09 is unchanged from the last time we met in July. So unless our director has something to report with the new set of numbers she has here.
No, but I did give you a handout. It was yesterday that our funds did get rolled into this fiscal year. So I'm very happy to report that information and then we'll start putting the funds into the proper accounts that you've authorized, like trust fund books, the strategic planning, you've authorized additional funds to go into those accounts. So we'll take them from the future library projects account and then transfer them into the appropriate accounts and get the, get things going. So I'm very happy about that.
So when you say the funds have gotten in there, is that this is for the next fiscal year, monies that are appropriated by the city council? Is that correct?
Well, your funds are special because they are your funds. And so we had to close out last fiscal year and it took a little bit longer than anticipated, I think. So what you were seeing in your packet was a lot of, you were seeing reports from last fiscal year, I believe, and there were no funds showing up currently in this fiscal year. So anyway, I just wanted to let you know, your funds are there and we're going and I'm still working on interest income.
Okay. So the last meeting in my report, we said that we were getting together with the Director of Finance for the city again to follow up on their first meeting with regards to how we're getting interest. And I suppose that's still, we're still pending?
Yes.
Okay. Well, it's good to be back. I'm glad to be back. And I'm amazed at all the work that you guys have been doing since our last meeting. Bravo.
Do you need the discrepancy between the 2,000, 2,51,000 and 1,988? Why is there that discrepancy?
Say the first number again.
2,51,000. Dr. Do you hand it out?
I think, go ahead.
I'm not exactly sure. I don't, no. I haven't had a second to review them except I can tell in your packet, trust fund books as an example, had 21,000 and then we had expenditures. So...
I know in our last meeting with the Director of Finance for the city, the one thing that she asked us to pay attention to, and it's not in the new pages that were actually sent to us, but it's approximately like page four or so in the package that was mailed where she said that we should rely on this figure for the cash amount that's in our endowment. So that's what I've been going to as opposed to looking at these numbers that might have some accounting issues in them.
So you're feeling this is the real number?
That's what I've been told is a real number.
Wait one minute, sorry.
So it's a page that actually has a title, print balance sheets by fund. And the first fund it says is 151 Library Endowment. Yeah, that's the one.
This is the first time we've seen it formatted this way, isn't it? I mean, I don't recall it being in a...
No, I think the difference between probably the last time is that they had a, they weren't accounting the loan to the foundation correctly. So that might be something different that you're looking at here.
So yeah, it should be the last page of each one of your, you've got three financial packets and you've got one for the end of the fiscal year, which they call that the 13th month. So there's a month that they take to kind of wrap things up. And then we have the first month of this fiscal year and the second month of this fiscal year. And then that sheet that I just handed you was, is just from yesterday because, and it's, it's just an odd form that I normally wouldn't give you except that the money has appeared. So, but yeah, the print balance sheets by fund, you'll see on some of them, they show, one showed $100,000 and then the next one, the other two seemed to show $90,000 as the note. So they took that. And maybe that, Craig, that's, maybe that's what's the different, the discrepancy between the balance from one year and the next. It's because we were showing the $10,000 that the foundation paid back as an expenditure line item, when really it was just, it should have been deducted from the receivables and not appearing in your entire expenditure status report.
Ginny, does this show our commitment to Wellwood or that hasn't, because it hasn't been expended yet, it's still in the balance sheet?
Yeah, it's there. $151,000.
Yeah, you still have 147,308 left on that.
Yep.
Where did it go? Is it under your packet?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thank you, Craig. On, yes, on that handout that I just gave you does not show an account number for Library Foundation. So the $10,000 is coming out of here. We've probably had some expenditures from last year. So there's some stuff to square up, but it's not lost, if that helps you.
To be clear, this report that you handed us out, had it out to us before we came in, dated 9/25. The next time we see this report, it, it should accurately reflect the foundation loan, correct?
No, this will never show the foundation loan ever again because the finance department did not like us to have that listed as an, as an account because they have a spot for it, which is in the notes receivable in your print balance sheet.
On the back, on the last page, okay.
Yeah, these are, this is your true, true cash, as it was explained to us by the finance department.
And I guess the last one I'm seeing here shows $100,000 still for the note?
And then there's another, I think the other two showed 90,000.
It does. Thank you.
Yeah, they did adjust that.
Perfect.
Any more questions for our treasurer?
Excuse me. All right, thank you. A report from the Friends.
Hi, Nancy can't be here today, so I'm going to give you an update from the Friends. Really, they have just started meeting again in September and they've been working on their Modernism events. They got three events approved by Modernism to be hosting during Modernism Week in February. One will be a house tour. The second will be a lecture at the main library. And the third will be an exhibit, all the days of Modernism at the Wellwood Library. They're going to be exhibiting mid-century modern pottery and dinnerware. So that, they've been working hard to get those going and getting everything submitted as they needed to do. So that's what they've been doing. And their next meeting is on October 8th at 2:00.
Thank you. David could not be here today, so he asked me to give a brief report on the Library Foundation. The Library Foundation, since we last met, actually had a working session with the Library Strategies Consultants to start to begin a reorganization of the foundation and sorts and to help us establish a strategic slash development plan. I think that it was quite successful in the fact that it highlighted our weak spots and what we need to work on over the coming months. In particular, we have formed a nominating committee that, we have set a goal of increasing our membership from 12 members to 24 over the coming months as we prepare for what will probably be a capital campaign next year for anything we do with the facilities. We actually, since that was announced, several of us have made those announcements. I made it yesterday at the Rotary. We've had a recommendation come to us already from someone who has a foundation background and just moved to our community. So we're beginning to highlight those. So I encourage any of you that know anyone who you'd like to put forth as part of the foundation, we are developing a job description so that I can share that with you here pretty soon. So it will highlight what we're looking for. And I'll just be blunt, we're looking for people who want to work, who want to help us get organized and have a lot of energy because we're looking at everything around the foundation. And that's probably the highlights, which is a lot of work as occurs since we last met. But any questions for me about the foundation?
Oh, actually.
Yes, sir.
Just had a brain moment there. Did you resolve the issues that were here when Craig came onboard as regarded the officers at the Board of Trustees? How was that resolved?
Mr. Courtwright resigned. Yeah, he stepped down.
Can I resign as treasurer?
And you resigned as treasurer. Yes, that's right. So you know, it, once we get additional members, we'll do another election here pretty soon. It's probably about time anyway. So you know, it's, it's coming up. That is your question?
That was my question. Thank you.
All right. I really had thought this next topic, we, we probably had dealt with enough for those of us who have been on this, this board for a long time, but I'm hoping that this is it. It's very exciting. I really have to applaud everyone who was involved in this after the last time we met. The design looks really amazing to me. It's very beautiful. So we're, we're going to move into talking about the Wellwood Library Courtyard. I assume we have a presentation or a discussion. Would you like to come join us?
We have a power point.
By the way, Ginny, it's my understanding that the plan is here for our information. It doesn't require us to do anything other, do we need to vote to, on this or is it just really for us to consider?
I think it's...
So you know, these plans incorporate years of comments, particularly the, the main meeting we had.
Tell us your name.
Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
I was, I didn't want to introduce myself. My name is Francisco J. Hyman from the Engineering Department, Associate Civil Engineer. I took on this project sort of help management, managing, especially once it goes into construction. So the comments that were made on the January 28th meeting were incorporated into the plans you see now. So what we're looking for, one is just, you know, consensus that these plans are appropriate to move forward. From this meeting, we're going to move forward with the HSPB Subcommittee to get their buy-off as well, ultimately going to the City Council Subcommittee and, you know, once we get approval, then we'll send it to council for requests for bidding, you know?
Can I ask, because when I talked with Ken Lyon, it's, he said it didn't have to go back to HSPB.
Well, and talking to Marcus, we would like just the approval from all the subcommittees just to move it forward.
And I would say the reason why you, the full board is getting, you're getting to see this is because of, partially because of timing, but also it's just easier. It's just, I'll see it. And I think that it's, it's a great opportunity to just have everyone's blessing, if you will, and then we can move ahead with City Council because like Jay said, this is what, what the committees have all come together and, and asked for. And now this is the first chance you actually get to see that. So I think that it, it would be a great idea if you did want to go ahead and vote for this. Ultimately, the City Council has the final say, but it's nice to have, have your approval on it anyway. But I did bring the documents and on memory stick and I can put it on the screen and we can zoom in a little bit, but we have the full, full plans there if you want to get up and look at them too.
And they're the same as what we got in our packet, right?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, it's identical. It's just, they're very tiny in your packet.
I'm going to ask a couple of questions just for my own information, but since the last time we met in this room and we looked at this and we had our input, are there any highlights or major changes that we saw since that time? Or is everything kind of pretty much what we discussed then?
Correct. The pavers, the planner area has changed as well. Some of the, I think the pavers are the items that change the most. And then what you see there in the center, that semicircle where the olive tree would be, that's different as well. I know there are some, you know, any minor comments, I would just like to sort of summarize. And if there are any changes needed, then I would, you know...
Did you bring materials so we could see what the pavers look like?
There are no materials right now, but DVD is requesting materials just for review, mostly just a, just the color for the, for the concrete or for the pavers.
David Bolt's design DVD.
I understand that. Usually used to seeing materials from planning commission.
The, the other question, the, the bid document, I mean, we still have a commitment of 147,000, the exact number we just discussed. So I'm assuming then, as Dr. Reddy mentioned our last meeting, that the, the difference between these two are being covered by the city. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And what Dr. Reddy also said is that our money would be last in and not first in.
Correct. It will most likely take the full amount, but yeah, you know, in, in order of, you know, making payments, it would go through what David Reddy promised and then you guys have.
And can you just, the alternate bid for an additional 25,000, I'm sorry, what, what does this mean here? Is this just an add-on or an addition? Somebody wave. The alternate bid, I'm sorry, it says alternate bid at the end here? Okay, CMU enclosure. At the very last, yeah.
It's the alternate to item 10, which is the AC unit enclosure.
I think it's different material type.
Oh, okay. So just an option?
Correct.
Okay.
And have you chosen which option you thought we should go with?
No, that's, you know, it's a collective decision.
Can you explain the difference between those options?
Oh, use your, your microphones off. Yeah.
Yeah, these are relatively new. So I haven't had a chance to dive into them yet. So I'll have to get back to all those different option types.
I was going to look and see if it says...
So can you go through it and just show us what you've done with the trash area and some of the areas that are difficult in that courtyard?
So the doors...
And is there...
Yeah.
I was just looking real quick to see if there was anything listed in here about the, see, the alternative.
If not, I'll get greater clarification from DVD and I'll provide it in a email to Janine who could send it out to you guys. Now, the doors, one by the Ben &amp; Jerry's and the one of the trash enclosures, they are proposed to be the same design. It consists of metal and also glass material. I believe there are still some, or Janine, you had some questions about the material type as well. And we've just got to make confirmation for DVD so they could put it onto the plans.
Okay, on page, what page is that of your handout? Page eight of your handout, it shows the doors. And I, I had some feedback on the doors as well, but they're not, what did you say that you, you sent that feedback in to them?
So yeah, so based on what we prefer, then that's what they would put in the plans. I know the doors have went over several iterations from the first plan. So it's just a matter of what everyone feels comfortable adding. I know in talking to Stacy, she was often more for the wood type doors, but that was her input on, on these plans.
I think the question for me with the doors was security.
Correct.
Because that was a concern of the staff that work in the Wellwood is that that is an unsafe area back there. So what, what, what doors did you choose and how does that address the safety concern?
The glass for the, being able to see into the courtyard. Also the doors would, you know, have a locking mechanism, but also a push bar or emergency push bar, you know, for people if they had to get out in case of an emergency.
And that's the entry door.
That is the entry door.
And these doors, it, it still says, specifies that exterior doors with panic hardware to be selected by city. So there's still a choice to be made on that, but it will have the panic hardware so that people can get out of the courtyard. And then these designs have transoms and side lights so that you can still see in, if we were to select something that was solid here as a solid door, you could still see through into the, into the courtyard or into the alleyway.
The doors I was more concerned with were the trash doors. And are they the same doors?
They could be the same in, in style, correct.
And they would be glass and see-through?
Correct.
And could the glass be smashed?
It would have a rating. It would have a rating to be temper-resistant, but if someone really wanted to smash it up, just like in any door type, it would take some work to damage them.
Is there going to be any furniture that's movable in that courtyard that could actually be used to smash through those windows?
I believe at the time it was discussed what any furniture that would be in the courtyard would be delivered there for any special events. Otherwise, it's not meant to...
Right. At this time, we haven't placed any furniture in this patio. The intention of the planter on the half circle would be that people could sit there. Yeah, and then if we did have a special event, we would rent chairs. And then we'll evaluate how the patio is being used. Maybe that's something we can do down the line, but right now, our goal is just to get it done and get it operational and then see what sort of traffic flow we're getting through there and what sort of use is happening.
I just have one last question, and some of you will know who's channeling through me on this question, but I noticed that there are no more planters here. Is this... Is the planting below ground, or I'm seeing root... What do they call them? Sorry. Root balls, are those underground, so there's no planters above ground?
I believe the olive tree, that's going to be... The courtyard is going to be in a planter box, a box, and they actually give you options as to what size.
Okay.
You guys would want.
The olive tree should be an old-growth, substantial tree that would provide some shade and not just a new little olive tree.
There should be size options on the plans?
What... Where?
I'm sorry?
Where?
I think it just lists one tree, one, just a 36-inch box tree, multi-trunk.
That might be a little bit small.
And I think that was the feedback that Ken gave, too, that he thought that tree was small and the planter was big.
Correct.
We should make the planter a little bit smaller and the tree bigger.
If you went out to Murillo and you looked at some of their old-growth trees that they've just planted, that's the kind of tree you want to plant, or the ones at the city cemetery.
I'm wondering if...
And you can buy them and plant them, but that should be an expense that's a piece of this. It should be a gorgeous old-growth tree.
I have a question about that. I'm wondering how to get a big tree in there.
They can... A crane can drop it in.
Right.
That's normal.
Add more money. Yeah, so, and then Ed, I think you were asking about the planters over on the south side of the patio.
I don't see any.
Yeah, and I think that that was just switched out for bougainvillea or some plant there, but not... No pots like we had before. We had pot, large pots designed there.
I know who you're talking about.
And she might be watching this.
Yes.
We are on the plan for all planters.
Originally, there were to be planters placed over here near the Ben &amp; Jerry's. I don't think I'm looking at it correctly here. Oh, I'm sorry. One here. See these right here? There were supposed to be planters, or, you know, these like pots. So, it looks like they've been eliminated.
Do we need that separation? We may not.
I think there was a question all about why we were spending money to put pots there anyway, so it looks like those were just eliminated from the revision, yeah.
The thing that makes sense to put in is a quality tree.
Any other questions for our guest?
The trash receptacle, that's item 14. It says there's going to be two of those at $2,000 each. Are those going to be in the alleyway, or are those going to be where people would see and use? That alleyway is to the east?
It would be in the, I believe, in the alleyway.
What... Can you tell me what page you're on, and I'll look at it on the screen?
I'm looking at the bid sheet.
Oh, the trash receptacles. Okay, I see.
And Jeanie, you explored that area the other night?
Yes, and it got cleaned up.
Outstanding.
Yes. I was so happy, so...
So, there's a good budget for lighting. What is the lighting arrangement in the courtyard? That's... I'm glad to see a nice budget. I just want to know what you're doing.
The lighting, I believe, is from the floor up, also security lighting for the front of the library as well.
Yes, they were planning to do uplights to illuminate the building, and I feel like that was in the back, but I don't know. I'm not sure. I thought, was it the whole building?
Yeah.
I'm still looking for trash cans. It's possible that they're just placed in the patio somewhere.
I got that confirmation as well from DVD.
I think that was a question I had was about lighting. I didn't see a lighting plan. We seem to have been something that was planned for, but it didn't make it in our packet.
Correct.
Okay.
But is there a lighting plan?
That'd be one of the comments to go to DVD to address. Also, construction notes regarding the placement of the lighting as well. Some comments were made by Ken as to having the...
Is the last page of our handout, it says electrical site plan. Is that the lighting plan?
The comment by Ken was for uplights at the olive tree to be set at 7:00 and 11:00 versus 5:00 and 11:00. So, if there are any concerns or issues with it, we'll make sure they're addressed in the construction notes on the plans.
Did you answer his question, man?
Is this last page? It looks like it says electrical, and it looks like it's showing lighting in the front of the building as well as on the side. Looks like...
Correct.
So, yeah, that's great.
Yeah, and I found the trash cans.
Oh, where are they?
They're on page four. Lisa, I didn't find them. Lisa found them. There's one in the corner, right? If you... Are you looking at the TV?
Yeah, I'm seeing yours.
Right there, as you'd walk into the courtyard and then over...
By the alleyway.
By the alleyway.
Good.
Which there is something that we can decide. If that's not a good placement for it, we could relocate it. If it needs to be closer to our door or closer to this door instead of that alleyway, that's an option, but...
And I'm assuming those are the standards we see around the city, you know, the concrete ones that are...
Correct.
And it does say that the final placement shall be reviewed and approved by the city representative.
And the 90-day maintenance for $4,000, what is that? That's item 24.
Did I read that that was to do with keeping the plants alive and making sure that everything was working perfectly?
That I would need to get clarification on.
Yeah, I'm just concerned at what happens day 91.
Everything dies.
How long is the guarantee on the plants? Typically, a landscape architect gives you a one-year guarantee.
Here we go.
And so, I'd want to see a one-year guarantee on all of the plants, including the tree.
And I didn't include every single document that the landscape, that the architect gave us, because they'll be in the bid packet. So, there are... This one, this document as an example, is the 90-day maintenance document, and it just says that it applies to all landscaping work, labor, materials, tools, transportation, incidentals to do that work, irrigation, landscaping. So, that's all going to be part of the bid packet.
But can you confirm the guarantee on the life of the plants?
I'll confirm it.
Maintenance and establishment period for the trees is one year on here, and that's from the date of completion of the project, not if they put it in two months early. Maintain all trees, adjust the irrigation, fertilize, weed abatement, watering... Yes, so it's all, I think...
Is there a planting plan for the front of the building? Do you know what it is?
Page nine shows some of that, I think, right?
Just got page 12 of 12 as well. LP 1.
Okay, hold on. So, this is the irrigation plan, and then...
Planting.
12 there.
Where do you...
Right here, 12 of 12, and it looks like there is plantings in the front, which was beyond what we had really thought would ever happen.
Initially, it was going to stop. There was nothing in the front, so it looks like we're getting lighting and plantings in the front in addition to what will happen in the patio. Is that correct?
Correct.
Very good.
So, the pink muli is the diamond with the circle, and then the crosshatch is blue fescue.
Blue fescue would be nice.
Yeah, and then the only other plant that's listed are the bougainvillea in the back. So, it's really just pink muli, if I'm saying that pronouncing that properly. Can't even say pronounce, and blue fescue.
They'll hold up. Bougainvillea as a choice, where in the back?
It's along the south edge of the courtyard where these... Originally, there were large pots proposed, but now it's just in the bougainvillea in the ground.
No, it's nice. It's just, it's maintenance work, but as long as somebody's out there sweeping the courtyard and cutting it back.
Oh, we have it for 90 days.
Right. And then we've got a job to do.
Other duties as assigned.
We'll get our clippers.
Any other questions from the trustees regarding the Wellwood patio plan? I guess we could take a vote to approve and say we like this, so do I have a motion to accept this as proposed?
Let's do that, but with the items you're going to get back to us on.
Okay.
So, I think that's the tree, the gates. There were a few items that you were going to get back on.
So, just out of ques... I have a question. What is the timeline at this point? So, after we're looking at this, at some point, you're going to come back to us with your answers to some of the questions we have. Then it's going to go to the City Council for approval.
One more stop, right?
One more stop?
HSPB Subcommittee.
Okay, the HS... Okay, that Subcommittee, and then it'll go to City Council?
Correct.
And when do you expect this actually to start construction?
So, I know Ken's saying as soon as they get a confirmation date for their Subcommittee to meet for the library, assuming a month, I believe in January, February, you should go out to request for bids. So, we're looking at a construction date anywhere between March and April, assuming you should break ground once everything's approved, provided that, you know...
And how long do you expect the whole project to completion to be?
DVD is working on the number of working days that would be assigned to this project, so once they get that number back to me, I'll include it in the email.
But just roughly?
I think six months.
Six months?
Less.
So, probably...
Overestimate.
Yeah, overestimate.
It's been five years.
Planning is longer, much longer than construction. Construction pushes you...
Don't overpromise.
Maybe 60 working days.
Okay, and so you're looking for an HSPB meeting within a month?
Correct.
And then you will let us at least know what changes come out of that. We don't... I don't... I wouldn't want to have to approve those, but I would like to know if they make changes.
All right, so any like comments or, let's say, requested changes from this Subcommittee plus HSPB, you know, what Ken, you have said, I want to combine them all, you know, because there'll probably be a lot of the similar comments as well, and as soon as I have those, then I will send them to DVD to make any hopefully minor changes. And depending on how minor the changes are, they could probably turn those plans around within a month.
Okay.
But prior to that, you know, I will send those out, and it'll be an email for everyone to see.
So, the motion that was made by Harry would be to approve with some comments that would go to HSPB, and you would come back, but it's still a motion to approve, right?
Correct.
Good. And hurry up. We don't think it'll get to this council, then. It'll probably get to the new council.
Okay.
I don't know. I don't think so. I think if you... If your recommendations are simply that we need an old-growth, better tree, and what was your question about the gates? Just information about the gates?
Well, the main thing is in the back where it's been insecure that however those gates where people have been, where there's been difficulty with people misbehaving, that in those areas, those would be secure gates, and they wouldn't create a problem, but those are the only two areas.
And that's a must-have for us, so I don't think there's any concern about that. You want to see the one-year guarantee for all plants and shrubs, which...
Yeah, right.
So, you could just say, these are the things that we want, and then it won't have to come back to you, because we don't want to spend any more time in committee.
No, I think just come back and tell us what happens. Not come back for more approvals.
Yeah. I think that would be wonderful.
I think we're approving. We just want... We want responses to our questions.
And just to address the gate that's off of Talkwoods going into the other way, I believe that's going to be a taller gate, and there's a gap that's on between the gate and one of the walls, and that's going to have a metal sheet to prevent anyone from just squeezing through. So, there are securities built into...
Yeah, and that was mainly my question, because the staff I talked to there were very uncomfortable with that situation.
Okay, and like I said, it will be a taller gate, and it will address the gap that most people probably are...
Perfect.
I just have one last question, because I remember from last year, there was a big issue about access for people with disabilities, so that's all been resolved here, right?
Correct. The ADA improvements will be at, off of Palm Canyon around the Ben &amp; Jerry's, so the grade will be improved to be within ADA requirements going into the courtyard.
Okay, and the entrance way is going to be also ADA compliant?
The entrance way to the courtyard off of Palm Canyon, yes.
And entryway from that courtyard into the library itself.
Yes, the whole ADA, the main non-compliance is right here in this walkway.
Right, right.
Because the grade, the angle's off, and then once this is all redone and everything's redone, then the ADA entrance will be...
Right. Well, I just wanted to ask the question, because it seemed like, you know, since the doors were being changed, too, I just want to make sure that everything was considered with this plan.
It will address ADA.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
And we're very concerned about that, too. We want to make sure that people can get in the gate, or that the gate can be standing open when the library's open in some fashion.
Correct.
If that's what we would like.
So, it is openable when the library's open?
Yes, it has... Yes, definitely has to be, and I was requesting some sort of way to keep this open, and then at the end of the closing time, the staff would come out and close this gate, and so that...
That sounds right.
So that it's closed, and we have to obviously think about our neighbors and what they need, too, so there may be... It may be something that someone has to come and lock at a later time in the evening, but that's to be determined.
Is there an opening from Oscars?
Yes.
Can people walk into the courtyard at any time of day or night?
Right through here, this goes to Oscars.
And so, what happens to that access and egress at night?
That's the thing we have to talk about with our neighbors, to make sure that if this gate is shut, this is still... You can still push it open and exit like you would with the panic hardware. You can crash open and get out of the courtyard, so somebody could walk out of there, and then the gate would close behind them.
And flee if something was happening to them.
Right, yeah, and any time of the day, if that gate were closed, they could still... They could get out.
Call a question?
So, the... Can someone read the motion?
To approve plans with comments, period. And then we have the comments written down.
So, to approve the plan with... So to approve the plan with response to the comments that we've given and the feedback, and that's particularly around the items that you mentioned, the warranty on the plants?
Mm-hmm, the tree and the gate security.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Who was the second? I have Harry as the first.
You were.
No, I thought you were.
No, you were.
I'll be it.
Yeah.
Great.
David is the second. So Harry's the first, David's the second, and it was 5-0.
Come on!
Motion passes.
Thank you. Finally. So let's, let's hope, let's, I'm being catty here, forgive me, but let's hope that we see this patio before we see the next topic in reality, okay? Let's not have a ribbon cutting for a new facility and still not have a patio at the Wellwood. Thank you very much. For the good work.
Somebody should tell David Gray.
Maybe he's watching.
He's probably watching.
Hi, David. Next topic is the building committee update. Wow. We've done a lot of work since the last time we were here, correct fellow trustee?
Yes.
And so please join in, in your perspective on this report as well. But we were committed to making a recommendation to city council by the subcommittee by October 23rd, that is our deadline. Which meant that we started out with three sites that we were going to evaluate, and we worked with a consulting firm to identify criteria that we would use to evaluate each of these sites. Being consistent, we, the consultants researched and recommended some more standard, I say national, they correct me, but it's what most libraries consider whenever they're looking at a site. And then we spent time as a committee identifying what we felt was unique to Palm Springs and some of our criteria for a site. Let me reiterate that it's so difficult to have these discussions without dreaming about what a facility might look at, and we have to get back on track to the committee and say, we're looking at land and dirt. We're not looking at what this building will be someday. However, we have, we have taken that path to try to spark some sort of visual of what this land might be used for. So for example, we, we visited the current site. We were actually at the main library. Jeannie repeated her presentation that she did for us. And we also had all of the, the previous proposals that we've seen through the years, so that when we looked at what land was available there, we could kind of imagine what we could do and we, with the existing building. So it was worth taking that. And we've had history lessons as well along the way. Why are we there? What paid for it? And, and what were the people before us thinking when they put the library at the current site? All those things have just really been very helpful for this group of outstanding citizens who are just so tireless to go through this. Then we looked at Lot G, or Block G, you may, may have heard of downtown. That was last week. And there, we, we took a side trip and looked at the new Riverside Main Library, which is, for us, if we were to go downtown, we're talking about vertical. We'd have to go up just due to the land size. So we looked at where communities like Queens and Riverside, or very neighbor, have had to think creatively about going up instead of going out. So we spent some time looking at those ideas to kinda spark, you know, a visualization of what that would be. Tonight, we are talking about College of the Desert. And we went from three, we had six at one time. We dropped back to five. So let me share with you what those, what those are so that you, you understand. So at one point, within a week, we went from three to six. The other three sites we've been asked to consider is, you, you may, you may know that there is a piece of land the city owns on North Palm Canyon and Stevens, near the Denny's, we describe it that way, but we, it's, there's a vacant lot there.
It's between a rive and the Denny's.
Yes. So we've been asked to consider that as a possible site. At the same time, we had an opportunity to discuss with the Unified School District some land that they have just up Barista where the temporary C O D is located. They have asked us to withdraw that as an option. So that's, we, we did have to give that option up for reasons that we understood, so that was withdrawn. And then in the, in the last conversation, the tribe has approached us with a possibility of some land. They have made available to us, if you know where their headquarters are on Dyna Shore, it's surrounded by lots of land. And they've said pretty much, the land around headquarters, we'd love to see a library there in a partnership with the city. So that has been added to our consideration list. We started out, if you guys remember, for some of us, a year ago, we had nothing. We had no money. We went from having a little bit of money to having six options. So it's quite remarkable, and I think it's, it's a testament to our city that people are so excited about this and what possibly could happen.
And the audience is passionate.
Passionate. Last week, well, last two weeks have been almost standing room only when it came to public testimony, which is wonderful, because we're, we're, the community is just behind this 100%. And maybe, we know we're not gonna make everybody happy, but we are listening to everything that comes up. That's not our job. But I guess, and I, I will, I will hand this over to have Kathy jump in, but we, we really have been trying to be very disciplined not to dream. I, I wanna state that again, because we have not made any decisions. We have a lot of work left to do. But it's, it's very difficult when you want, and as a librarian, you know, you think, oh, we wanna have this and you wanna have that, without thinking about what a building might look like. But we're looking at dirt right now, except for the current site.
You gotta get the dirt first.
You gotta get the dirt first. The current site is probably the exception. So the next few meetings are really talking about dirt. There's nothing there. We start from scratch and go from there. Just one final comment, our, our, our next meeting will be examining the tribal land. And then we will go into a deliberation where we're, we'll be in this room, we'll be throwing all of our analysis out on the table and going around to determine a priority list of what we think is our first, second, maybe third option, and why. And then we're due to write a staff repile, staff report, staff will write staff a report with my assistance and support.
Team effort.
Team effort. And there is a possibility that the committee will be invited to council to have a joint meeting so that everyone on the committee will get a say with how they came to their decision, which I think is a great idea. So we're working to try to make that happen. And I think that, you know, we, we're on schedule to make that recommendation to them officially. Because there's several people on the council who have said, please, I want to vote. If it's my last meeting, it's my last meeting, but I wanna have a vote in this. So let me, Kathy, would you like to add anything to that?
I, I think the one thing that comes into this is the passions for the existing library. So those come in two different ways. They come from users who love what you guys are doing, and they come from people who love the building without, but not necessarily a library perspective. So I think we've had, we've had those. And then we have a really interesting group of people on the building committee who come out of the schools, different communities, close to parents and children, and with a lot of opinions that are very grassroots. And so it's, it's been interesting. The criteria are pretty fairly applied. We don't always agree. We have a lot of split, split votes. The hardest issues have been access, parking, and safety. And, and locations, and location. But the criteria, every site gets evaluated against criteria. Some of my friends think I have an opinion, which I don't. But it's, it's, you know, it, it's an interesting, it's an interesting process, and I think it's going, it's going well. It's very hard to not think about program, though. It's just that's, that makes it very difficult when you're looking at it. But it's, it's been a good process.
I would say that contrary to what you may have heard, there have been no decisions. You know, we have not even gotten close to having those kinds of discussions. I know there, there are people out there saying, oh, they've made a decision to tear down the old building and build a new one, or they're gonna redo the, the old building, or they're gonna build a tower downtown. None of that has even...
Or they're gonna build an annex, or they're gonna change the front entry of the existing, I mean, so they're... We have discussed things, though, like site plans and the original site plan for the existing building. We've discussed what, what the city is doing in the downtown and whether this would fit, you know, how this would fit in and what the advantages would be of being next to a police substation and a park. But not, not with any decisions. So it's, it's a, it's just, it's a very nice group of people. Probably the hardest thing has been a little bit of inconsistency because it's, it started in the summer.
Yeah. It's, and I agree with what you said, Kathy, that it's, it's been a process where I, I tell you right now, I have, I have no idea how I'm going to, to vote on this. Because as a matter of fact, I've heard from a couple of people, I don't know if you have or not, that they feel we're very critical in everything we talk about. But I think it's just our way of making sure we run people through, or you run these options through the criteria in a fair manner. And we're trying to uncover everything we can in that process, good, bad, and ugly. And I think that we're having some really great conversations. So I'll stop there and see if you guys have any questions for us.
Well, you sat in on all the meetings.
Right. The process has been wonderful, and I think it's gonna help you come to a good decision, but it's gonna be a hard decision. The points that people bring up are great points. So I'm kinda looking forward to seeing how it's gonna turn out.
Me too.
But the process has been great.
I have some questions and comments. So this Palm Springs Library work plan that Craig was so nice to share with me, where it says, the last line, presentation of report to city council on October 23rd. What's the date that it's being presented to the, this body?
The, the direction that we have received, it will go to city council first, so it'll probably come back to us as a, after the fact, unfortunately. Well, we gotta talk about October's meeting, by the way. So let me, let me stop right there. The date for the October meeting may have to be shipped to this board. But at this point, it could very well be after the recommendation has gone to city council.
Because I would recommend that we actually schedule a meeting before it goes to the city council. I think the city council probably would like to know that we, as a board of trustees, actually sat and saw it first.
It's, it's city council's meeting, so they're the ones who, who could do that. I'm, I'm out of town. That's why we're having a discussion about, on 10D, about the meeting date. So...
Let me, let me take that to city council and to Dr. Ready and see what we can do.
I would like that. I think that because this, this board is going to contribute the funds we have, I would assume toward a new library. I think it, it doesn't necessarily mean that we make a decision here, but that we hear what's happened.
Well, I'd like to endorse it, frankly. And, you know, I, I, I can't say enough about how I really feel to some extent, maybe the, the public has not gotten as much of a say in this process. And to not have us as a board of trustees give it its blessing. And I've been listening to these tapes, and, and I appreciate the fact that, you know, Jenny, Jeannie, you've actually put, or passed along those audios to the city clerks, which actually get uploaded and are available to people online. And I don't know if there's ever been a report to people about where they can access those and listen to them.
We've been posting that on Nextdoor and on Facebook.
Yeah.
On Nextdoor?
Yes.
And Facebook.
And on Facebook.
So I'll have to look for that.
And Facebook where? On the library website?
On the libraries. I put it on the library's Facebook page, and then I posted it on the Palm Springs Neighborhood Group. And then Denise Schoolsby puts it out. Typically, she's trying to put it into her neighborhood report as well. The one P S neighborhood report that goes to your neighborhood representatives. So we're trying to get the word out as best we can.
I see, I see it online.
Because I do recall listening and to one of the tapes, and I remember hearing David Ready say that he didn't, he got a notice about the meeting kind of at last minute. And I think that was about two or three meetings ago. So, and I certainly haven't been getting any emails about any of these meetings. And I think I actually sent an email to Cheney once about, please confirm for me, about whether or not there's a Wellwood meeting tonight. And I did not get a response back. So I'm a little concerned about that. I do have some other comments, but if you would like to respond to that, I'd...
Yeah, so the, let me go back. We, we've been trying to meet in this room because of the technology. And unfortunately, we've got pushed out of this room because of other commitments for this room. So it just so happens that we announced that we were moving, and I, I can't speak for why David didn't get that message, but we did announce to the committee and everyone with, it was a, I can't remember, we had to move to the main library, as a matter of fact.
And it was on, it was on the agenda, the location, but it just was an oversight.
And where is, where is that agenda being? It's on Nextdoor and Facebook, I guess?
It's on the city's website under city council subcommittees. And then when you click on library subcommittee, then all of the agendas and packets are posted there.
So let me...
And there is a posting on the public posting board here at city hall.
But not generally sent to the board of trustees?
It's not a board of trustees meeting, so it's not, not officially sent to...
Well, I know that, but I mean, just as a matter of courtesy. I mean, it's an issue that the board of trustees is, all of us, to some extent, is monitoring.
Sure, and I'm sorry about not sending it out. We, we're just, we're putting these meetings one right after the other, and it's, it's kinda harrowing.
We get this out there.
Yeah, I have plenty of copies of that. Yeah, I have plenty of copies of that.
Yeah, so let me speak about the timeline, because I think that, I, I hear that you guys want to see this, but let me, let me tell you what we're faced with.
Can I say something about that first?
Yeah, he does.
The meeting on the 23rd of October is a City Council meeting to get the recommendation of the ad hoc meeting.
I'm not confused about that.
Well, there's no way we can get that information before it's given to council.
We're, we're sitting here discussing Wellwood before it goes to council.
If, if we get it before, then it'll be public before council is told.
Hold on. The final draft of the report is sent to City Council on October 10th. Isn't it possible for this group to discuss that?
It is possible, but I'm not so sure that if we discuss it, it's going to be for information only. I don't think that we are authorized as a Subcommittee of the City Council.
We're not, we're not.
To make any changes to it. So yeah, that's just the charge.
I don't know how much we're being required to put in, to input for Wellwood, but here we are, talking about it.
Understood, David. I'm just telling you that I think this is an issue that we, we're a City Council Subcommittee here, and we're in charge.
Maybe you can explain why we're discussing it now if we're not going to be discussing it later.
Because you guys asked for updates at the meetings, and so we wanted to provide you with the most current update that we have on the process and where we are. Happy to take this issue to City Council and to staff and see what they say about us circling around, but as, as you can see from the, from the schedule that's been given to us, we have the 10th, the final draft of the report, and I, I have to find out if that can be reviewed by anyone other than the committee. You know, it may be that we can tack a trustee meeting to around that time, but I'm not so sure that I am authorized to do that.
I'm kind of surprised, it's, you know, the amount of time I'm spending reviewing what you guys are discussing in this building committee, not to have it come back to a full discussion of this board.
We don't have a say. The committee reports to council. They don't report to us.
Well, that's nice, but I don't agree with that.
Well, I'm just saying that that's the way it normally works in government. I've, I've been in situations like this.
I, I, you know, I've seen, I've seen government situations which are different than this.
In my case, county council first, then it goes to the library.
Happy to take that feedback.
Take it back to the city.
See what they say.
And this was taken out of our hands by the City Council Subcommittee at some point in time, so that they appointed the building committee.
Correct.
They made the decisions on it, and they set the dates.
I'm going to have to go back to look at our notes, but I am pretty certain in the minute somewhere, there was some discussion about how it's coming back to this board before it goes to the council.
There was discussion. I agree with you.
And I was asked to give, provide reports to you, it's when we meet, and.
What, let me just make a motion that you discuss this with Dr. Ready and the City Council Subcommittee and see what we, whether there's room in this.
At some point, you know, it may be that we make the recommendation to City Council. City Council might say, thank you, committee, can you now take this to the trustees for something? There, I don't imagine they're trying to cut us out of the process. I just don't know where they think we should be in the process.
Where we fit in.
Yeah, so I think that, yeah, the point being is that it's my understanding that they want the recommendations first, so that they can vote and make a decision. Now, I can ask them, at what point in this process can we take this back for the trustees to review? I can't imagine that the time is going to allow us, if I bring this to this committee, and I can be totally wrong, please, to this board, and you say, well, I don't agree with that, I want to make a change. I don't think that that's, that we can make changes at that point, but I will verify that. So I'll ask what role the trustees play in the process and what we can do to insert that.
Yes, especially given the fact that the trustees actually spent some time in the last meeting, discussing how much we were going to contribute financially towards the consultants that are discussing this. I feel that we have had some kind of fiscal responsibility for this process, and not to have any kind of discussion about it seems.
I hear you.
A missed, it's, it's.
It's very similar to Wellwood.
It's not, it's not a trustworthy situation, in my opinion.
I, that, that's not my opinion, but I think that what we can do is definitely, if you want to make a motion, I'll, I'll discuss it with them this evening if I had.
I wouldn't make that motion if there's a second.
Oh, second question?
Yes.
October 23rd presentation, that's not a decision-making, that's just a presentation.
That is correct. That is correct. And I don't even know, at that point, what City Council plans to do with that. They may go into a closed session, they may have a discussion at that point, but I can't imagine they're going to have some discussion about it.
Council ends the first meeting in December. The old council leaves and the new council comes in, so they have left themselves November.
That's correct.
For decisions. So I think that's, you know.
And they only have one meeting in November.
They only, yeah.
First part.
One meeting after the election, or only one meeting period?
Only one meeting in November, period.
Oh, because of.
Because of Thanksgiving and whatnot.
So anyway, that's.
I do appreciate that, if you could do that.
Absolutely.
One of the other, one of the other comments that I had was that, in listening to the transcripts, is that it seems that there are a number of members of the committee that seem to think that, well, not even seem to think, they actually stated in so many words that they were going to write dissents. And I'm a little concerned because, and they were, and, and I, you know, it's tapes, I don't, can't identify these people because I don't know their voices. But there were a couple of people in the meeting that was at the library that said that they were interested in writing dissents. The issue is twofold. One is that they were, in their, in their conversation, they said that they, in accepting the position, they were guaranteed the right of being able to look at the document and say, if we have some other comments that are in disagreement with it, that we're free to do that. And of course, nobody's going to say that we can't have dissent, right? I'm just a little concerned about, in the final decision-making process, whatever that may be, whether we get to see it here as a board or goes directly to the City Council, that the final report actually has an addendum that has too many dissents in it, and therefore waters down the actual import of the report. So that's just a comment, it's an observation, and.
May I respond to that?
Sure.
Yeah, I, I'm, I was there, I don't remember those words coming up, but let me, let me maybe further explain how the process has been defined by our consultants to carry us through this. So at every meeting, we dedicate that meeting to looking at that particular site, as I've mentioned, we look at history.
I'm familiar with that.
Right, so at, at, we've decided that we will go through the criteria, we take a vote on how we feel that site measures up.
Right.
The deliberation process is where, maybe you heard.
I'm just referring to the final report.
Well, the deliberations process, let me finish, is where dissent, discussion, disagreement will all come out and be discussed. And clearly, if the, we will go with the majority of the committee saying this is the, our priority, but absolutely, if there is a strong feeling that I disagree with this and here's why, that would be included in a final report. It's not our goal to, you know, say this is it and there's no further discussion on that. As a matter of fact, I would imagine that we're going to say in that final report that we support this site because it meets the following criteria, but here are some considerations that we feel either support this or maybe don't support this and why. And that could be everything from one of our representatives representing, you know, children and, and parents saying, this is just not conducive to, you know, promoting more usage by children, you know what I'm saying? So there definitely will be a part of that.
Well, I understand your goal. It's just when I'm listening to this, and maybe it's just a matter of because I have to sit there and listen to it on an audio, that the perception that I got from that was that I was really, as somebody who's actually been part of a process like this elsewhere, where people have a lot of different opinions, the important thing is to actually find consensus. And I'm concerned that at the final process, people will be more inclined to issue dissents than to find consensus.
When I look at the people in the committee, I think they would be more inclined to get to consensus. I think the dissents may come from the audience, depending on which site is selected. That, that was more of, and, and, but I could, I think you're right that the goal is to find consensus. And I missed one meeting, so that, those comments might have come at the meeting that I missed.
The, the last comment that I had was, was really kind of, I guess, more of a humorous one, an observation, which was, given the fact that you have people who are fundraisers there, people who are very experienced in fundraising, you have people who are experienced with architecture and art, you know, and building, it's very interesting to hear how they bring their expertise to the table, but then they find that what you're discussing isn't really exactly their expertise.
Yes.
It's purely the land and the site. And I'm enjoying listening to that struggle, because realistically, it's the one that really is the most important part of why we're sitting here considering this, is because we're trying to figure out what makes sense for the site itself, from a varied, from varied viewpoints.
It's interesting that we didn't have in a criteria, can you fundraise for this site, because that would have been one of the criteria I actually would have liked to have seen.
Oh, I'm happy it wasn't there, as well as the, the architecture, because those people who are architects or building planners would have said, oh, no, no, you have to listen to me.
Yeah.
It, it ties to the, the visual of the building and what will happen there. However, however, it, it does not mean that a, a representative of the community that sits on this committee can't make that a consideration and ask that to be included. This site would be impossible to raise money for in the, you know, I mean, I would, there is definitely, that could be brought up. We have a motion to, can you read the motion?
Kathy made the motion, and Harry seconded, to discuss with City Council Subcommittee and the City Manager about the board's review of recommendation.
Do we have a second?
Harry.
We had.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you.
And it was for Ed to discuss, not, not for us.
And I'll do it ASAP and report back to you guys. Maybe tonight, they'll be there. So all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Now, I can report this back to staff, and you can distribute the, the answer I get from this. Is that probably the preferred way?
Yes, that's fine.
Okay.
Sorry, Don, you had to wait.
Yeah, we should have moved it ahead.
Yeah, I forgot.
So, once again, my name is Don Uwano. I'm a senior civil engineer here for the city, giving you a report on the J.C. Frye Building. Basically, when I was last, my last report, I was informing you that we had two architects that were submitting proposals for the design. Those proposals did come in, they're about the same price, but the cost for construction and design looks to be about $350,000.
Yeah.
So, and that's very conservative numbers, because dealing with an old building, we don't know what we're going to come up with. I wasn't sure about the funding, because from my understanding, we thought it was going to be a lot less, it would be a lot cheaper.
Isn't there funding that's coming from Prop J?
Measure J.
Yes.
There is.
Yes, this is Prop J funding with a.
I don't think it was that much, though. I thought it was in the realm of $100,000, but I don't remember the dollar amount.
Was it about $260?
Oh, $260?
We, we have $600 and.
$23,000.
$23,000 that this year we must spend. And we, we set, not knowing what the cost would be, that we would give, and I can't remember the numbers here, I'm sorry.
I don't have them right off.
A portion of it to go to this project, another to go towards the, the building, if we needed consultants or architects for this building. So I think that we just need to adjust those numbers, especially in light of the fact that we do know that Measure J has now $1.6 million for the project. So I think we just need to revisit that, correct? Is that?
So what we should do is, besides that, you had asked me to request a Measure J to pay for your strategic planning, your building committee consultants. And so I, I checked on that, and what we need to do is make it more formal on our agenda, so that it is specifically agendized for that, not, not just discuss financing, but to say, requesting a Measure J funds. And then you all, if you approve that, then we will write a letter to Measure J doing a formal request of them. So this may have to be a formal request as well.
Absolutely.
That may modify the funding for them.
Do you mind a motion to the formal request?
Well.
Yes.
Is this one.
I so moved that we request $300 and.
$350,000?
$350,000 a minute of.
I would do a.
Measure J library, well, $400,000.
I would do a contingency, $400,000.
$400,000, okay.
To, because when I asked about the other thing, they said, oh, you need to formally list it as an agenda item, mentioning Measure J. And we, we, this really.
This is important to you for program, for just, we've got five years at least, if we stay in the existing building.
Right.
We need some time, we need, we need help.
We need it done.
But logistically, I think I need to bring it back to you.
It needs to be a public noted agenda item, is what you're saying?
Yes.
So we can't vote on it?
At our next meeting, we'll have to.
All right.
So your motion is that we bring this back on the next agenda?
Yes.
Exactly, that's the worst.
To request the funding?
You going to second it?
And I think at that.
Second, absolutely.
And I think at that time, we probably look at those allocations that we had put for, for this project, along with any money we might need for the new facility cost. We will just adjust that, and we can then look at the money that's been given to us from Measure J, so.
Is the site decision by the committee going to have any impact on this decision?
It.
You're spending $350,000 on a building that, if they make a different decision, might not be a good use of funds.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Please jump in, but it was our discussion when we talked about this, that the, this particular building would be in use for, beyond any new facility, so it was important for us to make these, these updates to it. Does that answer your question?
But by the next meeting, you'll know, you'll probably know the committee's recommendation. You will definitely know the committee's recommendation. And so you could, this will be on the same agenda, so you could.
Can we have this as an item after that?
Yes.
But arguably, right, I mean, from everything I've heard from the building committee meeting, that even if we decide to stay at the current library location, or if, or if we go away, that the timing is going to be so far off that we might as well go ahead with this project, because we're just going, we're going to need to use this building.
Yep.
That's exactly what you just said, I think.
Yeah, I think we'll know a little more.
It'll be four to five years before a new building gets done.
At least.
And renovation is a whole nother issue, because they'd have to move out.
$350,000 include expansion?
So when I got involved in this project, my understanding was that there is an existing need for meeting space at the current library.
And bathroom.
And so what we were going to do was move the archive equipment and archive room, turn that into a meeting space, and that equipment would go to the J.C. Frye Building. The J.C. Frye Building does not have restrooms that are operable, there's, you know, fire sprinklers, I mean, just to be an occupied space again, there's a lot of things that needs to be done to get that, so that the public can use it as a, to view archive material. And then the storage room next to the archive room would also be turned into meeting space. And so that's all included in that $350,000. So that's solving an existing need, as well as the rest of the J.C. Frye Building can be used for whatever it is, whether it's friends of the library, extra meeting space, whatever. It would just be usable space for the library's existing needs. So that's kind of what I worked on for this $350,000.
But the footprint of the building now will remain the same?
Exactly, yes.
It's not increasing for $100, $300,000?
No, it's, it's replacing, putting in working fire sprinklers, fire safety.
I've spent many hours in that building.
Yeah, yes.
And I'm just concerned about what new building would cost.
Oh, yeah.
Millions.
Yeah.
Kind of for the little, little building out. Well, then, I think that a, a lot of this is design costs, I mean, the architectural fees and the, the.
The sprinklers and the mechanical, electrical plumbing, the HVAC system, basically, those are the big ticket items.
And this is not designated as a historical building, is it?
It's not Fray, it's Fray, it's Dr. Fray.
Fray.
J.C. Fray.
And so it wasn't, it wasn't a historic building, and there's no, absolutely no historic.
Someday.
Not yet.
Someday.
It was not whatsoever.
So.
It's really cute.
It's a nice cement box.
I, I, I had to do this, but we, we have to conclude this meeting by 4:30 so they can set up for the building committee, so looking at the clock on the wall. I think that we have a motion to bring this back to our next official meeting, and I think the point is well taken, Craig, that we just, we'll know more about where we're going, and if we want to revisit, it'll be the time for us to revisit that decision. Yes, sir?
Could we come back to one last little thing about the building committee after we excuse him, because I just, there's two points that I wanted to raise.
Okay.
Yeah, there's a motion on the floor.
So all in favor? You know, just read the, just read the motion one more time, so.
The motion is to bring back on the next agenda to request an adjustment of Measure J funds authorized for this project, for the J.C. Fray Building.
And then to readjust the authorization for consultants to, to, I think we should do both, so we hit the dollar amount that we were offering.
Yeah, and I don't necessarily need a motion for that, I'm just going to bring it back for that one. But this one, because it's, we were just, we're here talking about this project, so let's just make it official.
Thank you for your work on this.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Did you vote?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for voting. Thanks, Don.
So I just want to be clear, what are the next dates for building committee meetings? And where?
So tonight, at 5 o'clock, we'll be meeting here in this room. We are scheduled for October the 3rd, back in this room at 5 o'clock, where we'll be discussing the next site. On October the 7th, the time is yet to be confirmed, we will go into deliberation on our reviews so far to start our, our selection.
We think at 6 o'clock.
We think at 6.
If the committee agrees, that that's the, that's the first chance this room is available, is at 6:00 PM on October 7th.
Then October 8th is the next where we will begin the draft of the report for the recommendation.
That's not a meeting.
Right, that's you, that's, that's us doing that. October 9th is we will take the, back to the building committee to review the draft report before we finalize.
And I don't have a room for that.
And then the final draft of the report is sent to City Council on October the 10th. So I will, and then there's a presentation scheduled on the 23rd to City Council. So I will find out where in this process we can come back. So I will find out where in this process we can come back.
Okay. And my final question is, uh, going back to Measure J funding for the consultants, what's the status of that?
I'm bringing it to your next, um, your next committee, your next board meeting because we need to formalize your request as a, as an actual agenda item so that it, people could give public comment if they needed to. And then if you approve that, then we will write a letter to Measure J, and then they will agendize it and answer us.
But it to...
So it has to be formal.
That's for new money, I would imagine. What about the existing money that's already been allocated to the library?
It's for the existing.
Existing.
Existing, yeah.
Yes.
So the consultants are getting paid by...
The trust fund at this point.
Yeah.
But I just read a treasurer's report where the trust fund balance hasn't moved.
I know.
They haven't billed us.
We just got the money yesterday.
Okay.
It's been locked up.
And they agreed to, uh, hold us as long as they could until we kind of settle all these things as well, so.
I'm just concerned about the timeliness of all this because it seemed like back in July, it seemed like there was urgency to pay them.
That was the old contract, which has been taken care of.
Right, um, but there was some concern about the pending business that was going to have to be done for them, uh, given the fact that there was this grit agreement, grit agreement. So, um, and it seemed that that was part of the urgency of it, and that's why we had this discussion about using Measure J funds that were existing, and that was about, and, and had the ball hasn't moved since then.
So in the minutes we, we approved, you'll remember that the last meeting, we were talking about two things, the extension of their existing contract for this next phase of work, which we, we agreed to, and to send that to the city. We asked that the trust fund would cover it if we needed until we get the Measure J request straightened out. We agreed to that.
Exactly my point right now, because, uh, having the Measure J situation worked out three months after that meeting seems to be an excessive amount of time. I don't know.
I, I, I think it's, it is what the, what it is at this point, because everyone was dark, there were no meetings, there was no really anything happening.
The only thing we could do differently was to authorize you to write the letters for, as the board chair, and resolve it quicker.
So the, the city asked for what they called a bridge contract or agreement with the trustee, with the consultants until this was worked out, and they agreed to that. So basically, they're on a contract, uh, using whatever funds, well, they have the fund, they're, their funds were...
They haven't submitted any bills yet.
They haven't sent any bills to that. So they're waiting for this decision to be made as well.
Okay.
Now, what happened there, in all honesty, is that with the deadline we were given and the fact the building committee had to start immediately, this was, this is the resolution to that. Otherwise, we would have had to wait until all these discussions were had to get started.
It's just that my impression, just sitting here and hearing, um, our director say that it's coming out of the, uh, the trust is a little disconcerting for me because, I mean, we made a big point about how we need to get this Measure J fund used, and, and nothing's really happened since then.
So, is it possible, Jeanie, to authorize Ed to, to go ahead and make the request to Measure J and do that before our next meeting?
The way I was directed was that it needs to be on your agenda.
Republic comment.
It can be done.
Republic comment.
And we said we would use our money, and then we would get reimbursed.
Okay, so it's on our agenda, it's nothing we can ask?
We'd get reimbursed.
We, we said that we would use our money, but we did it under the, uh, really, under extraordinary circumstances.
So if we, it may even mean...
These circumstances are more extraordinary now that time has passed.
Well, the only other option would be that we've talked about changing the October meeting and possibly changing it to sometime after December tenth, but that would be a week or two weeks away, and doing that quicker so that we can make the request to, to deal with your concerns.
Well, the next item is the October meeting.
October meeting.
Yeah. So, I, I mean, if we have to agendize it, then, and we know we may have to change the October meeting, maybe we change it to an earlier date so we can get this done. Works for me.
Are you ready to talk about that item?
Yeah, so the next item, October meeting.
Uh, I was going to request that our next meeting be October thirty-first.
Till you further.
Because I am going to be out of town. Um, and I'm leaving the evening of October tenth, and I'm going to be gone until October twenty-seventh. So, uh, you all are welcome to meet without me. The last time that happened, though, it did not go well.
What about meeting October tenth for a short meeting?
Uh, we could, we might not have this room, depending on the availability of the room.
I think not having the room would be less important than resolving those two issues and have a, have a half hour meeting.
Yeah, and ma, and whatever is most expedient, and certainly, Jeanie, I'd appreciate if maybe we could get together and have a phone call about this Measure J and how the process goes, because I'm very confused by it.
What do you, just a second.
I, I have one issue that I wanted to bring up.
Jeanie, you're leaving on the tenth?
I'm leaving that evening of the tenth.
It what?
I'm leaving the evening of the tenth.
What about tonight? It's Wednesday.
We're checking, um, we've got, we've got events happening, so, let's see, we've got a lecture, Aguacaliente Band of Quia Indians, Then and Now, six-thirty in the Learning Center.
Well, our meeting isn't three, so...
Do you wanna do three?
We can go to Wellwood.
We can't go to Wellwood right now, we have, there's, there's another, there's a new issue that's just come up, that room's not gonna be available for a little bit.
All right.
Maybe on the ninth, um, at three, maybe. We have, um, on Thursdays, we have, uh, already, the room is reserved on Thursdays in the afternoon, but do you wanna try for the ninth? And I don't know about this room, it's...
Sure. The ninth works for me.
You might be able to get the planning room, uh, in, I don't know.
Do you all have an opinion about a morning meeting?
I, you guys can meet, I'm flying in.
Okay.
I'm flying in from...
Are we going to? We need to find a space for that, if that's a meeting, October ninth. Is that a meeting?
It should be.
Standby.
Should be.
Because we need to find a space for that, too. Yeah. Okay. Our preference, do you think is Wednesday, October ninth, at about three? Is that okay?
Anytime after nine thirty.
And where would that be?
We don't know yet.
Oh, we don't know?
We don't know. And, yeah.
You're gonna have to have a building committee meeting as well.
Mm-hmm.
It's scheduled to be the, uh...
We'll look and see what's going on. It's possible, we could, I'll check the calendars, it's possible we can meet in the, in the chamber, um, council chambers. We wouldn't be able to be video recorded because if, if there's a commission meeting happening already in this room, it's being recorded, and they can only record one at a time. So that's a nice room, um, so...
Whatever.
Find room.
Meeting in large.
What about time on the tenth?
Well, you're leaving.
I know, but what about in the morning?
I could do the morning of the tenth.
Thursday, October tenth? Ten or eleven?
Morning be preferable.
Okay. We don't have a computer class? Okay. What time?
That's, that's better for me.
That's on my day, though?
Thursday, the tenth.
So that's the first day, that's the one you want me to check first?
Yeah.
Okay.
Tenth works for me.
True. Okay, we will report back right away.
We'll get back to it.
Oh, okay.
All right.
Thank you.
I had a personal item before you.
I'm sorry? Oh, we're not ready yet to adjourn, but, um...
So the twenty-seventh, we eliminate, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, so we will, the twenty-fourth. So we will not meet on October twenty-fourth.
Okay.
Correct, thank you.
So the next item is a, uh, report from staff. Do you guys have any reports or...
I do, real quick.
Okay.
I've, I can't figure out where I put it. Okay, uh, we are bringing in an exhibit called the Legacy Wall, um, and it is going to be at the library November twelfth through the twenty-third. It's a wonderful exhibit. It's, um, where is it from? Julie, help me out.
Chicago.
It's from Chicago.
The Legacy Project.
And, um, it's part of the Legacy Project, it's an LGBTQ history. Um, we're, um, scheduling many school visits from all over the valley. They're going to bus children in to the library, and, um, our friends at the library are helping to sponsor this. They've been very generous on this exhibit, and it's humongous. So, um, you've got to come see it November twelfth through the twenty-third. We're participating in the Pride Parade, Sunday, November third. Um, the library will be closed October twenty-fifth. It's a Friday, we're closing for our annual all-staff day, where our staff get together and, and participate in trainings, and it's a really great, um, item. It's a great thing for our staff to do, good team building and, and great educational opportunities. Um, that, uh, we have, uh, we're creating a teen advisory group, um, and that's part of our strategic planning initiative. And so our first teen advisory tag meeting is on Saturday, October twenty-sixth. I don't know the time. Do you know the time? Three something. It's in the afternoon. Um, as part of outreach, we participated yesterday in the city's Employee Health and Wellness Fair, great time. Um, we've been doing library card signups and, um, all month and at this wellness fair. Uh, we are participating in National Night Out, that is on October first, from five to eight. It's a free family event in the Palm Springs Stadium, right next door to the library. So everyone's invited to attend. We are participating in the Career Fair, held at the Aguacaliente Rancho Mirage location at the show. Um, that's on October third, that'll be from five to eight. And, um, so again, a wonderful outreach opportunity for us to talk about, um, the resources that we have to offer, um, you know, college students, high school students and whatnot. Um, we're having a Halloween party on October twenty-second at six P.M., so come dressed up. Uh, we, uh, we do have our wonderful fall events that are happening right now. Um, one of the neatest things that is coming next week on October second is, um, Luis Fuerte, he is the cameraman for Huellhauser.
Louis.
Louis, it says Louis, take a look at this. This is, um, but I didn't do the accent. But, um, he's gonna tell about his time, uh, working with Huellhauser on California's gold, and that's Wednesday, October second at six-thirty P.M. Uh, we have our computer classes, um, we're having a Medicare one-on-one sign, or informational workshop. Um, and then, like I mentioned, October ninth, um, this is an interesting lecture, and I, we've seen a version of this, um, when they presented at Neighborhoods USA. It's called Aguacaliente Band of Quia Indians, Then and Now, and it's talking about the, the past, but also about what's coming in the future. So we recommend you come and, and learn about what's happening with the, with the tribe, and that's at six-thirty on October ninth. So be sure to check out our, um, our website, palmspringslibrary.org. We've got Wellwood programs starting soon, um, some teen, um, and youth pumpkin carving events, we're, we're very, um, excited about that, too. So, does that, come see us at the library. Yeah.
Trustee comments and requests, yes, ma'am?
Just one question to your report, do you register voters?
We have voter registration forms that we can give to someone if someone wants to register to vote. So, kind of.
Kind of.
Yeah.
And you've got all those computers that can register online?
Yeah. And we're doing, we're partnering with the Census, and, um, to help get the word out about the Census. And then, um, we are partnering with Desert AIDS Project, and we're doing some Get Tested, um, events at the library. Um, I did a partnership with Desert AIDS Project, and we are getting a grant, so that's news to come.
A question for you, I'm, this turned out to be a difficult couple months for me. And I'm gonna be out of town, sorry, I don't mean to do this, from the third to the ninth. I intended to call into the building committee, but I don't know if that's sufficient for what you need, and do you want someone else to do it?
You, can you call in?
I can call in.
Okay, well, let's, we're gonna do our best to make sure that happens.
And, um...
Let's try that first.
And if you, if it's something that we're just doing a score, I recommend the proxy, like you've been doing.
You and I can talk, and you could proxy.
Okay.
You know, I'm so sorry for your loss, and, and God bless you for the community service that you're able to do.
Yes, thank you.
I mean, talk about Gilman's work, that's amazing, thank you so much for it.
Families first.
Couldn't do it without you.
You do what you gotta do.
We'll make it happen. Anything else? Uh, anyone else have any comments or requests? All right. Um, we'll stand adjourned at four-thirty-seven, and thank you, and you'll hear from us soon about the next meeting.
Thank you.
So did you get away for a while?
Hmm?
Did you get away for a while?
Get away for...
From the desert for our last meeting?
Oh, yeah, as if New Zealand wasn't enough. No, the last meeting, I saw you, you just came back from New Zealand.
Oh, no.
Yeah, yeah.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, yeah.
No, because we were talking about...
Oh, that's right, that's right. Like, traveling, so, yeah, yeah, yeah. No, I was in, uh, I was at a AIDS conference in Washington, D.C., and some things I was doing in Cleveland, but other than that.
It's tough. Been here to enjoy the weather.
I, I miss mostly summer. I miss the monsoon, I miss the, the rainstorm that was the biggest since February fourteen.
Oh, yeah.
I kept, you know, going to the Weather Channel, find out what's going on, and I said, wow, I'm so sorry, I'm missing this.
I always seem to come, because we spend most of summer for Big Brother, I come back for this, the storms and things, like, why am I here, I should be back up there?
Yeah, yeah. Well, you know, even listening to these meetings, it's very dramatic. I mean, it's really interesting hearing the public comment about what's been going on, so.
Yeah, there's a contingency at the meetings from friends of the, the lighters. And the friends, remember the first training we had, February or January, one of these consultants came in, was it?
It's, it's like nothing.
Oh, oh, yeah, at the convention center, yeah.
When they were raising hands on certain things.
Oh, yeah, there was a contingent for the friends then, too.
They voted as a block, they really...
Well, they were all sitting together, too.
Yeah, and they sit together at these meetings. Yeah, too bad I can't send you a visual of what these things have been like. But they're interesting. But the, um, the panel, or the committee, if they all show up, it's a wonderful committee.
Yeah.
It really is. They really put some people on, it's some interesting, diverse people there.
Sometimes I was just like saying, thinking to myself, you haven't done your own work. You've got this white bug in front of you, and you're asking these questions about where we are, where we've been. It's like, read it, read it.
Yeah, that's all you gotta do.
Do your own work.
Now, now you talk to the...
We'll see you on the street.
Thank you, too.
Okay.
Thank you.
Bobo Jones?
Nice meeting you. All right, the next one is Bobo Wince?
Yes.
What's that name?
I think they have food up there.
There might be something over there.
There's some food.
Help yourself.
There are tamales up there.
Hey, hey, you're giving away Daddy's husband's dinner.
She's all stocked up here, she's all stocked up.
He's got it, he's got it.
You know, you really need to start to bring it in like a thermal case, like...
I have bags.
Oh, she's not, this is not her first trip.
Her first day at the rodeo?
No, 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 no. See, I can't help these days because of my...
Oh, that's true. I know, I regret to do that earlier, so I'd like to get back.
Can you guys hear me?
There we go.
So I'll kind of learn the system here. And we are based, I have my business partner, Monica.
Hi, Monica.
Ilzy, who is a resident of Palm Springs. Uh, we are based in, um, in Torrance, in the South Bay. I have a retail store in Santa Monica. I've been in the business for...[1769.24]
Where in Santa Monica?
Uh, Santa Monica Place Mall. I'm on the first level, um, next to Coach and Louis Vuitton. So we have a retail store. And so this first collection going around, um, is my one ounce. I literally, I don't make two of anything. This collection going around is my, we call it dainty. And one of the things that I do, I'll pull one piece. Um, so when it comes to craft fairs, you have different people with different budgets. So we have a low, middle, and high end. So the reason why I pulled this piece, this is, would be one of our lower end pieces for somebody who wants to spend $25. Okay? Everything is handmade in our studio. It's my, um, family business. My uncle's been in the mining for over 40 years now. So the stones, if we don't mine them, we have a relationship with different mines. So like I said, the first collection going around are like the pieces I'm wearing. I, like I said, I don't duplicate any of the pieces. That's our dainty. And this is my fine jewelry. So we actually work with 14 karat gold, uh, diamonds, opals, watermelon termlanes. Um, so again, if you're a customer that comes up and you want high end, we have it. If you want something where we only make one piece, we have it. If you want something where you want a $25 gift or you want to buy for, you know, um, a relative, that's another one of the fine jewelry. So even, even with the fine jewelry, I can't repeat any of the, of the pieces. It's each one, one piece of each, if that makes sense.
Where do the stones come from?
So we're up to, we're up to 52 different stones. So, I mean, I get asked that question a lot and my answer is from all over the world. From Russia to South America to Arkansas. I, I was raised in Memphis, Tennessee, so a lot of people don't realize a lot of natural stones are mined in the US.
North Carolina Emeralds. And they come already cut in these shapes or do you actually recut the stones?
So, a lot, a lot of the larger pieces are in their natural state. The fine jewelry, we actually, I, I hired a cutter and polisher. And so we're doing that in-house. So we literally, we don't outsource any, anything. The only thing we, we did make in the past were our chains. And then I invested in a chain machine, so we're actually spinning. And I do have somebody that's actually cutting and assembling chains as well. I, I have, the reason why I'm passing this around is because we make necklace, rings, earrings, cufflinks, and pins. And again, this piece coming around right here, I don't know if you've ever seen an opal pin before, but literally I can take any stone and make it into something, okay?
Do we have his booth? Do we have his picture?
So I have a question.
Yes.
If you're in a mall-
Yes.
What do you, what's the village, what attracted you to Village Fest?
So I'm, I'm, I'm currently, that's a good question, too. I'm currently in about 75 retail stores that we wholesale to. So the reason that I do craft fairs, the reason why I'm interested in Palm Springs, I'm in two spas here that we wholesale to. And so when we do craft fairs, it actually helps to-
Promote.
Promote. But, but the end game for, for us is online, so actually we're going to be launching an online as well. So that helps to promote our online as well. It's just, because a lot of people come to us and we're like, they're like, well, if you have a store in Santa Monica, what are you doing at a craft fair? And one, I'm marketing. Two, I'm making money. And three, I love doing craft fairs. I love meeting people. So sometimes I think when people meet you at a craft fair or a festival, they kind of like look at you like they want to haggle with you or they think that you're desperate to make a sale. But we're established. But I, I like doing craft fairs. I just got off the plane, uh, last night, got a couple hours of sleep. I was in Denver seeing my wholesale accounts and I did a craft fair while I was there for the weekend and I'm here today.
And what, um, just one more. What, um, spa, what spas are you in or what stores are you here?
So off of Repulso Way, uh, is a spa, a new spa. I don't even know the name of the spa. I have a sales rep that handles that. They're opening up a second location and there's a couple retail stores that have emailed us about carrying the product, but we haven't got the product into their stores yet. Okay? Let me, um, while you're looking at the jewelry.
Well, I have a question about the hats.
Yes, sir. And I have those here.
Do you make the hats?
We do make the hats.
You actually, we're wrapped them out of paper and straw?
Yes, correct. And we're doing fine wool and I have a supplier for the, um, for the, for the rabbit and the beaver, so. So what I did was I launched a hat line about 10 years ago. And we did that business. I got into the jewelry business. So now I'm combining the jewelry with the hats. So I have, um, a couple of people, milliners, that are hand weaving, doing the, doing the hats, doing the wool, doing the beaver, and now I'm taking this-
So let's just, if we can clarify here, because you said you make the hats.
Yes, sir.
But you just said you have somebody who makes the hats for you.
In our studio.
Okay, but you personally do not do that.
So what I personally do is I hand shape the hats. I make the jewelry and then we sew the jewelry onto the hats. So, so with the hats, and I just finished taking a class as well to, for, for hat finishing. So what we do, I've seen hats everywhere and at different markets, but I've never seen anybody who's taken fine jewelry and then put, put, sewn the jewelry onto the hats.
Can you pass the hats around?
Sure.
How many people do you have working for you?
So I have six people in my studio.
And then you have people running your stores?
Yes, correct.
And then you have wholesalers?
Yes, I have sales reps.
Okay.
Yes.
So you have, and you are personally making all the jewelry?
Yes, and I have, I think, pictures, yeah.
But I mean, so every piece of jewelry we've seen or touched or coveted, you've made?
Yes, I'm, yes, I'm a master jeweler, yes, sir.
You just need to clarify that because of our regulations.
Sure.
And your business card is, do you have business cards with you?
Can we bring any business cards? If I, if I don't have any with me, I can always send them. I don't think we brought any business cards. No.
Do you have any samples of the earrings? You said you make earrings.
Do we have any earrings? We're not, we didn't bring any earrings, no. Yeah.
We'd like to see everything you're going to put in your booth.
Sure, sure, I understand. And-
Like another weekend's half in New York visiting with friends. We went to, neither one of us had been to Italy, so we spent a month in Italy. Then we went to Greece afterwards and just took the train everywhere. Didn't have any chance to-
This is a nice, a nice, creates a nice, nice lifestyle.
It does.
The only time, we did it twice. And the second time, first time was perfectly fine. I think the people who were there were very kind and selfish.
I just had one, actually. Thank you. Yeah, we, you know, I don't, Bruce has probably mentioned that we did that keto thing.
You guys, you got water?
And we still are. You haven't had that before?
Yeah, there's water next door.
Because I'm a dessert person. It runs in my family.
Oh, my mother was a great, was, was, what I would describe as a Polish baker. So she would make just things that were out of this world.
But we do occasionally. I do what's called, you know, like a cheat, cheat.
Yeah, well, that's not-
That works.
We're just, we're inviting people to sit up here for a moment-
Just for a moment.
Until the meeting starts. Do you know, do you know each other?
No, I mean, we've, I've briefly seen you around and been coming to the meetings. Nice to meet you, Michael Hudson.
Michael, Michael worked in the San Francisco Library, so.
Yeah, for 20 plus years. Plus I've been working in libraries since the eighties.
Oh, good.
Both academic and public.
Good.
Yeah.
That's a great background.
Watching you from afar back there. It's hard not to interject sometimes, but, but I mean, I'm- I'm on the Library Foundation. I'm the, um, I got on that just two meetings ago. And I'm also on the Sunrise Park, Neighborhood Org. I'm the treasurer as of last meeting. I used to be secretary on the Neighborhood Org, now I'm the treasurer. Because we have two people leaving, so we got to build that back up again.
How closely, I guess you're following this site selection process fairly closely?
Yeah, pretty closely. And right now, I'm, I'm a little biased just because-
I think we all are.
I'm in Sunrise Park and the library's in my Neighborhood Org too, so. But I've got to open, you know, watch everybody go through the process. Great questions, actually.
I really like the current location.
Seems like it's going a little, I don't know, I'd like to see it maybe not go too fast, but you know what, it is what it is. Doesn't mean it's, the decision's going to be solidified, you know, there might be changes afterwards. We know how things work.
I hope so. I think we, if we do our due diligence and pretend a strong case, I think it will be one that the city will adopt.
Yeah.
I hope so. Because I mean, we're doing a lot of work here.
Definitely. Oh, yeah, you guys are.
And so Kathy, we're going to do, I think we talked about, uh, top one, two, and three, right?
Ed is going to maybe take a straw vote to talk about the Stevens Road parcel separately because people aren't having enough time to think about that.
Have you had a chance to think about it?
I actually, my first response is to like it.
Is to what?
Is to like it. I like it for different, for different reasons than, um, for visibility, for safety, for draw. But I don't know what the lot size is.
The, uh-
It has, that lot has a really interesting history. Do you know it?
Right. Not all of, but I do know that as far as in terms of the lot size. The lot that the city owned is one acre and that, which is adjacent, is a point seven five acre and is estimated that it can be purchased for $1.5 million. I think it's, pardon?
I mean, if you were doing it, you could talk to the city and just sell it to a parcel chain and trade.
Yeah, I think the, I feel almost as if it's just too small.
Hi there.
Hey. Hi, George. Go ahead.
I'm open to most of the sites.
Yes. Well, I think there's some name tags out here.
Unless you want to keep your name plates for this meeting?
Oh, I may give you some, some checks on this. I am actually, I'm sitting with my cousin's dog and they're going to be coming, coming back. It's left, I left it alone. And because I couldn't get anybody else to house sit it and I might have to go and, excuse the dog.
Oh, yeah.
I'd like to get some contracts before, that was before this meeting got set up for tonight.
Sure. I understand commitment.
And then I forgot to tell them they've been doing it. They're going, they would do Mexico and-
What part of Mexico?
They went to one of the little border towns. They just moved to the desert two months ago and they're living in one of those communities that has all sorts of activities. And I think this is their chance to meet some new neighbors and-
Yeah, that'd be nice. Sounds nice.
Oh, yeah. Are you committed? Oh, I'm, oh, I'm totally committed. It's good, but it's hard. It's really hard. I've been doing that for, my husband and I were doing that for six years. You know what happens is over 10 years. It's just, it keeps you, it keeps you healthy until you're not. I'll put the agenda on the screen for you all to see. Who is the woman that went in? And the two men that are sitting there. Just dial?
We're on the dial. They're on the dial. Just a minute. No location, but I'm sure they're in the library.
Hey, there she is.
Oh, yeah.
Well, it has been only hours. Please enter your access code followed by the pound or hash sign. Other than districts where you meet more than once a week.
Please re-enter your access code followed by the pound or hash sign.
Hey, there he is.
Please re-enter your access code followed by the pound or hash sign.
Yes.
Please re-enter your access code followed by the pound or hash sign.
I know her face, I can't remember the name. Grace, license? Yes, oh, yeah. Okay. Okay.
This is the force behind Grace.
Good deal. Right. Yeah. The circle of life. Hey, how's it going today?
Is there a Palm Desert this afternoon?
Yes. We were in, uh, that area this morning and it was, we left around 1:30. We had a little drizzle in, uh, Indio.
That's a rare occurrence, talking to you.
Yeah. I was kind of happy to see it, but then also unhappy because just washed the car about-
I did too.
Four days ago.
I did too.
I'm thinking, I hope we don't get a lot of rain and get the little dirt on the car.
When I got in my garage.
We're gonna give everyone a few more minutes to arrive, so...
Do we have anyone that's dialed in? Can you announce yourself, please? Sue Hall? Tony Garvey. Anyone else? All right, thank you, guys. We're waiting for a few more people to join us. It's five oh three. We'll give to five oh five or five oh six to see if anyone else comes in. My mic was on. Can you hear us now? You got to check on your phones.
Yeah, we hear you. This is Jeannie.
I don't know what we can do about that, guys. This is the best we can do. I mean, are you watching us on, um... Yes? I don't, I don't know what else we can do. Can you hear us now?
Oh, good.
Um, barely on my phone, so I may hang up and try the YouTube.
Okay. Why don't, why don't you do that and see if you, if it's any better? Okay.
Yeah, it looks like we're live.
Yes? On YouTube? I'm sorry?
I got an email out of office from the, uh...
They put us on hold.
Oh.
They can't put us on hold.
No, we, if there, if there's nobody on, it's just us, and that's all we hear. So if they're not calling in, here, check your text.
So what do you want to do?
We can just hang up.
Not hang up the phone, then. Well, I'll be asleep here in a few minutes. So Jeannie, pointing clarification, if they're on YouTube and they can hear... I, I can't imagine they may not, but if, you guys, if you're listening to us now, if you want to speak to us, you're gonna probably need to, I don't, I don't know what we do.
Just text, text us back, and we'll turn it back on.
Text us back, and we'll, we'll try to turn it back on. All right, um, let's, let's start this meeting. The time is five oh six. We're, we are, by the way, in this room, we are on the air, we're on, we're being recorded, and we are also on YouTube, just so that you know. So please, when you're speaking, if you would make sure that your microphone has the green light, so press the button if you wish to speak, so that we can hear you loud and clear. Is that okay? All right, um, can we do a roll call?
I'm Jeannie Case, I'm library director for the Palm Springs Public Library.
Ed McBride, president of the library trustees.
Kathy Wormick, member of the library trustees.
Michael Hirschbine, friends of the Palm Springs Library.
Donald Morgan, member of the subcommittee.
Naomi Soto, measure, member of the Measure J Commission.
Juanita Garner, community member.
Thank you all. I know, I realize it was just hours ago that we were together, and here we are back again. I think that we're doing a really good job staying on schedule. However, before we get started, I, I wanted to ask for a vote tonight. It's, we are going to be discussing College of the Desert as well as the fourteen fifty North Palm Canyon. The consultants and I feel that we, we have some more information about fourteen fifty that we need to compile. But I, it would probably be more on the line of considerations, not so much any data. But I want to know, do we feel like we want to discuss that tonight or postpone it to the next meeting? And if so, um, we can either do it tonight or do it at the next meeting. Is there a motion?
I would move that we do it at the next meeting.
Is, is...
Okay.
Are we gonna get more information on the tribal site?
Yes, we are. Yes, we are.
And, and, and fourteen fifty North Palm Canyon?
Correct. There's some more information they feel they can come up with.
And, and do you think that we can get through those two in one meeting?
Um, I believe we can.
Okay, I'll, I'll support that.
Okay, I'm sorry, question?
Do you feel it would substantially change the data that could be forthcoming, substantially change the discussion for fourteen fifty? I mean, it's hard to say if the conversation would be any different today.
I won't go on record for saying that it will substantially change it. I think that it would just allow us to make sure we have everything that we possibly can. We have, the consultants have spent a lot of time before each meeting, really combing everything here at the city, and historically, what they can about the sites. And, and they just shared with me that they feel like they just need a little more time to get maybe some more information. Now, by the way, it may not be anything that would change our discussion, but they just asked, would we consider postponing? Otherwise, we can move forward.
And just to clarify, so the dates when we'd be looking at option four and five is?
On the October third.
Not, so it's not Monday, but the Thursday, right?
Remember, October, the September...
So we have no meeting Monday, and then the two meetings on Thursday?
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah. That meeting was canceled because of the observance of Russia.
Right, I just wanna make sure it's kind of for the public to know as well.
Any, anything else? I mean, it's, so we have the motion to postpone. We can take a vote, and majority will either continue on or we'll change that. So may I, all in favor of postponing the discussion to the October third meeting, please raise your hand. All opposed? I also want to remind, I know that we've had a very aggressive meeting here, so if we need to have proxies like we've had in the past, please feel free, if you can't make a meeting, to send a proxy over. And Jeannie is taking those as part of the record and adding those to our tallies. So, you know, I, I know that we all have lives, so I, I respect that.
And can I just add the, that, the handout that you got does reflect David Brinkman's additional votes.
Yes.
So at our meeting, when we were at Wellwood, there were only eight people in attendance, but you'll see a score of nine, and it's because I've added in his scores.
Yeah, which we do for anyone.
What is DB on, not on DB?
David Brinkman's form.
He didn't have that response.
He did a, he did an older version of the, of the checklist, and so he didn't have an answer for that one. And then when he wrote a question mark, I just recorded that, because I wanted to be proper in recording his wishes.
And, and by the way, it, it, the process, when we go into deliberations, we're gonna revisit all these anyway, right? So hopefully David will be there, and he can represent how he feels about that. But this is just for the record of that discussion, so it's fresh. But we will be revisiting all of these, as we know in deliberations. Okay, any, anything else about that? All right, let's open up for public comment. If you'd like to make a comment, would you mind coming up and joining us at the table and speaking into a microphone, or we have a handheld, whichever you might prefer?
Question, do we want comments about this site, so that we're, we're getting comments more specifically to what we're dealing with? I think that would be helpful.
The College of the Desert?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes, sir. Absolutely, sir.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. You wanna come up and join us? Whichever you prefer.
I prefer to stand.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you. Um, it does, it's not real specific here. We'll provide a portion of the proposed campus for building a new library. Is this going to be a separate building from the COD library?
Yes, sir, it will.
It will be two separate buildings.
Well, we don't know what the College of the Desert plans in terms of the library, but we do know this will be a separate building from the buildings that are associated with the College of the Desert. We do know that.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Because I know of somebody who had some experience with combining two separate entities, libraries into one building, and it was a nightmare.
Our city librarian actually did, did very say that. I've worked in a library like that too, so I understand what you're saying.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for your comments. Anyone else? So as we have followed the same format for the last two meetings, we'll follow again. So in your agendas, we are gonna have a little bit of discussion about the history of the College of the Desert site, and why it is there, and get some background on College of the Deserts, and I think that Jeannie's gonna lead us through that. Don't, don't do that to me.
Okay, excellent. So based on the research that I found, we, I found an article from April of 2018, and it was based on a press release done by College of the Desert, and it talks about their Palm Springs Mall site, and that they did do the purchase of the site. It's, the site is located at Takwitz, Farrell, and Baristo, so where the old Palm Springs Mall was. And so I believe that it went through many years of deliberations with the property owner, and they did come to an agreement last April in 2018 to purchase the land, and they did do an announcement. And it is twenty-nine acres, as you can see, and it was purchased for twenty-two million dollars. They did purchase some adjacent leased land, and so they're talking about, in, at that time, their plans were to build a three hundred and thirty thousand square foot permanent campus there. Let me see, what else? Here's the information about what they're hoping to have at the site. They're really hoping to do digital media and film, hospitality, culinary arts, some healthcare, and sustainable technologies. I know that they talked about recently, in the state of the city, last night, I saw some slides that talked about building a boutique hotel, restaurant. And do you remember what else they talked about?
Technology commons that will support...
Oh, Digicom, yes, which is right here. So it sounds like a very exciting campus to have in our city, and it's right next door to the historic Camelot Theaters, across the street from the school, the high school, Palm Springs High School, and just a couple of blocks from our existing library. And what else do, would you like to know?
I would just share that in a recent presentation that I attended at the Noon Rotary Club here in Palm Springs, College of the Desert, it was very exciting that, you know, they feel their mission for the West Valley is to create a campus to promote training, preparing for job market, and in programs that are unique to their program at all. So when, when you hear about a boutique hotel, I'm familiar with my alma mater that actually was funded by Holiday Inn to do a hotel to teach hospitality, which has become an amazing program. So I think that when you hear about these kinds of things, it's very exciting that that's gonna be within our city limits and just be up the road. So I think that it's, it's worth us, when we think about, and we get to our criteria, just what's gonna happen there. I, I will tell you that I feel, as from the board of trustees, that regardless of where we are in the city, a partnership with College of the Desert is gonna be critical in serving those students, because we're gonna see those students here, and I think that it's gonna be something that we have to do, right, because they're, that programs are gonna be critical to what we do.
I also wanted to add, it was in your packet, which is available on the city's website. All of our packets are available on this city council subcommittee website, or palm springsca.gov. Go to city council subcommittees, go to library, and you'll see our agendas and packets. This report is one page of the, of a district projects priority order that I found at the College of the Desert's website. And that report was generated June third, and on this list, this is for the next five years, they do list there in the Palm Springs campus, that's what they're calling it in this report, the Palm Springs campus, they're talking about demolition. So the demolition is happening right now, and as we know. And then the Palm Springs future campus, they're looking at occupancy in the year 2024 to 2025, and they're expected to spend about a hundred million dollars on this project. But they've got the planning phase 2021, and then again, occupancy 2024. So that is their plan for that property.
Jeannie, I was wondering if you could, and I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but I know that you can do this for us, is that you, you had in your career, you actually worked at the Palm Desert site, which was a co-site with College of the Desert. I think it would be, could you share with us just your experience as a librarian there, and how the library worked, and firsthand what you saw, especially to some of the comments that we just heard, so...
Sure, I actually worked for eight years as the city librarian in the Palm Desert Library, and it is part of a joint use facility. It is a forty-three thousand square foot building, twenty thousand square feet of that building is the Palm Desert, I can't get, Palm Springs, Palm Desert. It's the Palm Desert Public Library, so twenty thousand square feet. And then twenty thousand or twenty, so, so many thousand is the College of the Desert Library, and then they have a common area in the middle. And like the gentleman was saying, the, the, working together, it, it works, but it's difficult, because they have two, two libraries, one building. It's almost like the food court of libraries, that's what we actually called it. And one library has one set of hours, different set of hours, one staff, different staff, Dewey Dental System, Library of Congress, different library cards, different library cards.
Oh my gosh.
All, one, one circulation desk in the middle. They're helping both sides. And so it worked. It's not the greatest plan. I don't like that model. I don't think the College of the Desert likes that model. In fact, they're planning to move out. They're, they have plans to move back to their central, the Hillb, building where they used to be. And so joint use facilities are tricky, and I don't think anybody wants to do that here. And from what we've been told in the past, they, nobody really wants to do a joint use facility. My biggest, I think, complaint is parking, because there is limited parking typically on a college campus, and students sometimes violate rules and don't park where they're supposed to.
Really?
And so that was the biggest complaint we had, was parking at, at that location.
So could you speak to the synergy around, for those of us who are library to understand this, but, you know, the collection? How do you, how do you manage a collection like this to serve all of these? And I know that this, this was probably a very print, print focused. It's my understanding that the College of the Desert is looking for more virtual as they move forward, as most academics are, but what about that?
Well, I think we both, we had both, and both, both libraries had both. We, we have electronic databases, they have electronic databases. And I know that, from what I've been told, the College of the Desert is not required to have a library at this site. So they're not required to, because their Palm Desert campus is their central campus, and so they have a library for their accreditation. So, but the synergy as far as working together and building your collections, we had a fabulous collection at the public library that, that was suitable for college students. collection at the public library that, that was suitable for college students. They're, they're typically recent high school graduates, so they're about at high school level, and so we had that collection just right for them. I also worked part-time at the College of the Desert, so I got to see both sides of it, and we taught information literacy classes to all of the students. I taught a workshop for the auto mechanic students, taught them how to use our databases, wiring diagrams on our Chilton database, and stuff like that. So it, it's possible to have really great partnerships and, and do work on both sides of the library, or for, for all populations.
So for a, for an academic collection that might, I know they're not as sometimes heavy in journal or research as they used to, but, so was the general public of Palm Desert, they had available, they could access those databases as well and do research?
Most of them. There were only a couple of things that they couldn't access, like there were some nursing resources that were, that were only for nursing students. So the general population, you can, you can do this now, you can go to College of the Desert Library and utilize their resources in the library. But if you were at home, you wouldn't be able to access their electronic resources unless you're a student. But their students could access the public library resources, the databases. Did that answer your question?
It did, it did.
Okay.
If we were there, what synergies would you see for our children being on that campus? And that's, I'm, I'm assuming there would be some things for Palm Springs students that would be very, that might be beneficial?
I think that the location of the College of the Desert's location in Palm Springs is perfect for the high school. They can, they can do college level courses, I suspect. I know my home state of Missouri, they have an A-plus program, and, and high school students get college credit for doing certain things, but they are right there, and what a great location for them to just walk across the street and go to col, you know, do some dual courses or something. As the public library, we are a support system for all, all ages of education, is, you know, in school or out of school, but, so there's a possibility that we could do some, some programs. We have, we have a developing teen program, and so it's possible that the teens from the high school could be, come to the library, they could do the Digicom. We could have a, a three-group partnership as far as really encouraging students to go to college. We at the public library, we are one of the members of my brother's keeper, which the Awa Kelly and Tevanda Kuya Indians has really taken on to try to help our community go to college and complete college. And so we, we help them with their, their goals and designs and aspirations and things like that. So there's a lot of opportunity.
And also with what they have at this campus, it doesn't look like it would be continuing education for adults in terms of hospitality.
Maybe.
Possibly.
Looking at my, and I'm sorry, I didn't ask permission to share this slide set that I've got from Rotary, but I'm consulting it. I should have asked for permission. I will and see if they'll let me share it with you all, but to answer your question, their courses are going to focus on general ed, film, screenwriting, art, criminal law, digital design. They're also going to have a cannabis program to teach the. Surprise.
To teach people how to make.
Human resources, state compliance and regulations as leadership skills in the cannabis business. Once again, they're focusing on.
So that might be a continuing edge retooling, or continuing ed retooling.
Adult basic education G E D classes. Does that answer your question? What's your, I think that's some of that. Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you so much, Jeannie, for compiling this information and the research. In the beginning of this process, I thought the city was in conversation with the College of the Desert, and they're going to be providing us with more information. Did, like, is this based off of those conversations, or is this based off of separate? Like, it's not clear to me, like, how participatory C O D has been in helping us.
Yeah.
Analyze the site.
I think that. Go ahead. I think right now, I think it's, we, we requested information, we don't have a lot of information. However, I think our criteria, we can answer it whether we know what level of involvement they want is. So we can, we can evaluate if it's a good piece of dirt, you know, we can, we can say, does it have good access, good driveways? What are, you know, we could go through the criteria and then see how it turns out.
When we look at number two, the extraordinary logistical considerations, that's in some ways the nub of this site before just getting there, which is, where would they put us? Would we get enough parking? Do they want us? And would this ever happen? And those, the last being probably even the most important, because it could be the best site in the world, but if it's never going to happen, then it's a, it's a difficult thing. So Ed, you said you had had some conversations that if the city wanted it, it would happen? What does that mean?
So let me, let me share with you the meetings that I have been involved in as we were preparing for this. The College of the Desert is definitely interested in a partnership, but they have pretty much said, we, the city needs to make the decision, do they want this partnership? And that's one of the reasons why we're here. And the city council and Dr. Reddy, we met and discussed this, was like you, I was saying, we don't have any of like the substantial information we've had so far in our sites, right? And so basically, they've asked, consider this a piece of dirt, like you have the rest of our considerations. If we think as a group, after going through the criteria, knowing that this is a very large piece of dirt, certainly we wouldn't take all of it, but if we think this is where we should go, and it meets our criteria, then our recommendation should be that this is where we think we should go. Now, we know that that's such a huge piece of dirt, and at this point, we're not, we have not been told that you're going to get this piece. We, as a committee, could say, we think this is the most ideal, because it meets all of our criteria, and we would prefer or recommend that you look at this, you know, the southwest corner of this lot, you know, or the corner of Farrell and Baristo. That is well within our purview to make that kind of a recommendation. But we've been asked to just look at this as a piece of dirt in the city as we would all the other lots, and does it make sense and it meets our criteria? And then the College of the Desert would, they would approach the College of the Desert and say, we're ready to work out this partnership now, because we've got a group of citizens who have recommended this seems to be the most logical place to be. I hope I'm answering your question, but it's, it was the way we've been asked to approach this. And once again, staying away from program, and I know I crossed the line a little bit talking about program tonight, but I think that for me, little questions about the program makes sense, because does it marry up to the library? Is a lot, a public library there makes sense, right? So I, I know I, I voted my, my rule here, but am I answering your question? Am I giving you some more information? Please ask, I'll, I'll share whatever I know.
Yeah, I mean, I think it's just different than what I thought, where we, where I thought we'd be at this point.
Yeah.
Which is fine, if, you know, it seems as if that's the direction we're going, and you know, that if we're looking at it purely on a real estate, you know, criteria, but I, personally, I was more comfortable taking this as a more serious consideration, assuming we'd have more information from. When we first, when, when the consultants did the three sites, it was under the impression, and there'll be more later.
Yeah.
And that's just, that's not where we are right now.
And, and, I'm sorry, so we, the consultants and I had an initial conversation with the staff of College of the Desert, and that's pretty much what they said, we're, we're planning the College of the Desert. If the library and the city so decides to share that piece of property with us, we're open to then further exploring that and solidifying what that relationship might look like. So for right now, it really is, this is, this is that discussion. And so there, there may be some questions about this that I can't answer, or no one can answer at this point, it's, it's going to be relying upon those next level of conversations. But they're open to that, as is the city. So it's, I know that, and I'm, I'm just sharing with you the conversation. Now, the College of the Desert is an academic site, so you know, their vision of a library, quite honestly, is not surprising. I've worked in academic libraries, virtual technology, reaching students in places where they may not come into a physical building, all those things I think are very exciting. And by the way, I, we could still support wherever we are, right? So, but I think that it's important that, you know, if we share that piece of dirt there, you know, definitely there'll need to be some synergies. So for example, I was, this is my thought, this is Ed, the citizen here, if they're going to have a culinary program, you know, many libraries nowadays are putting in test kitchens, so that the public can come in and try and, because cookbooks is one of the more, more, you know, popular things. So those are the kind of things that we might be able to consider in a partnership.
Culinary literacy.
Yeah. So as an example, but I think that, you know, for now, it's, do we think that is the best site located in the city, as we've looked at the last two, and we'll look at the next two? I hope I'm, I hope I'm helping in some way. Michael?
In terms of the site, as you mentioned, it's very large, and obviously the library wouldn't be occupying the whole site. So as we analyze this, i- if we're, if, if there's some movement towards recommending this site to council, would we be able to make it sort of contingent on where on that site we think the library should be? How many parking spaces? You know, all those kind of things we're being asked to analyze, that we can't, can we say this is good if?
That's a great question, and, and in thinking about this, I, I, by the way, the final report, this is our report, so we can put in that report and recommendation what we think is important for this decision-making process. I, I can't imagine that we wouldn't say that, knowing what we know about the College of the Desert, we think it is the best site to build the library of the future for Palm Springs Public Library, as long as we can have, you know, 500 parking spaces and we can have, you know, the follows, absolutely. And now, by the way, that might, that might influence the, the next phase of discussion and exploration with the College of the Desert if they can't meet that, but there could be some negotiation there, I would imagine, so. Does that answer your question, Michael?
And I realize that I also had the information that we got from the consultants, the site information.
Okay.
Which was not part of the packet, but there are handouts, so I can, if you, do you want me to review this real quick?
Absolutely.
Yes.
I have one more question about something you said before, is there, the district's projects priority order? So, oh wait, I think, you were looking, I think it was 2024? Now, is that?
Whoops.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
So is this the assumption of when the building, the funds would be used for construction or for usage?
And I think this is just, this is the college, this isn't us.
Right, so it's, it would be helpful for me to have an understanding of like, when it's being construct, like the timeline of the two developments.
I asked the question, and I'm sorry, I.
Good.
Remember, you were there, I'm going to ask that question. Dr. Reddy, if you're watching, I hope I quote you correctly. If this is our decision, this, this building will be independent of the College of the Desert and the fact that it will not be a co-managed building at this point. And if construction begins before, because they have multiple phases for that site, we're not linked to their phase, it would be up to the city and how they progress. So that building would be an independent building. Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, no and yes. So yes, I agree that these are independent time, like construction timelines, and that they wouldn't be influencing the other. It's just more like the user experience of if we were to build and, you know, just, just how much that space would be development open.
What it would look like, yeah.
If they were in alignment. And recognizing they don't have to be, but just if we knew that.
I don't think I could answer that question, but I, I think if I understand you correctly, you know, let's say that we say this is it, and city starts building a year from now, and College of the Desert is still two years before we see a building from there, so we're actually building on that lot, and there's nothing else there but the library is what you're asking, right? Yeah, I would say that, that could be a possibility. I, I'm, I don't, it could, yeah, yeah.
I know we're not meant to take into account financial considerations, but has there been any discussion about if or what this would cost the city? The site itself?
The site, the site, the, the land is controlled by the city in terms of there would be, they have worked out an arrangement, so there would be no cost to the city for the land.
I don't know, is that true? I don't.
It's what he told me, by the way.
I don't know if that's certain, but I wouldn't, I wouldn't quote that. I, I don't know if that's the truth.
Well, I mean, that's what I, because I asked that question, and that's what I was told, but we'll verify that.
I would say.
By city council.
I would say that it's not part of your, your considerations to be concerned about. You just assume that it's.
I think they would work that out.
Well, the only, the only place it is, is the question of does the city have control of the property and that.
And we'll ask for clarification.
That's a question that's in front of us.
So I'd say, I might answer, well, I'm not a voting member of this, I'm just advising.
Pure resource.
I would say the answer may be no on that one, because right now.
Yeah, they don't.
You don't have control, you as the city.
And when I look at this as somebody who's both financed and also built, these are projections. So when you look at the dates and the amount of money spent, unless they've told you they've got the designs approved, and they don't need to go through the city for design approval, unless they have all their contracts out, and we have no idea about that, you don't know, looking at this, whether they're going to finish in 2023, 2024, and open in 2024, 2025. What you know from these projections is that's their wish list.
Yeah.
And so there's no, I don't think we can look at this unless they've told us they've let all the contracts, and they have, even if you let your contracts and have schedules, you have bumps. So you don't always get to where you want to get on time.
Any other questions that we can, may or may not be able to answer? I know, I know this is not the, the best that we've had so far to come before us in terms of having lots of facts and figures, but, you know, it, it is, and we've been asked to evaluate it from that perspective, that is this a piece of land that we should pursue and, and build a library?
I have to leave, I had a prior commitment tonight, and.
You have a proxy?
Yes.
Thank you.
Do you?
Would you like for me to represent it, or Michael, or is anyone?
No, I'd like you to represent it.
Do you want me to?
No.
Do you want me to run through these real quick?
Yeah, let's run through the considerations real quick that the consultants identified for us.
Yeah, before I leave.
Okay. This is from the consultants, the C O D site is two blocks from the current library, like I said, located at the intersection of Takwitz, Farrell, Baristo. C O D will provide a portion of the proposed campus for building a new library and the parking needed for library users. The library, the plan would be to support C O D programs through our collection and the facility. It will not be co-managed and will be operationally independent of College of the Desert. The city will work with C O D to determine the lot size needed. I mentioned the streets. There are two bus lines that serve the area near the site. There is new housing being built in the nearby vicinity, it's medium to high end. The Takwitz corridor has multifamily housing nearby across the street, for sure. The Camelot Cultural Center and the Civic Center are within blocks of this location. I would add that it's, it's one of the first areas you see as you land, if you're on a, at the airport and you're driving in, into downtown Palm Springs, you will see the site. The high school campus with their performance center is one block away. Site considerations, the new C O D campus will be a draw from the Palm Springs community and beyond, and co-location with C O D may offer unique programming opportunities, which we did discuss. There's more. And again, more partnerships, opportunities with the, which is one of our partners already, the Cultural Center and the Palm Springs High School, and expanded programming. And the site should provide for ample parking spaces, and like you were talking about Black Friday, if you have enough parking for Black Friday, you have too much. Parking could be a challenge, though, unless the library parking is designated as separate from the faculty and student parking. The, a big benefit is that the library could stay in its current location until the new library is completed, so you wouldn't need a temporary location while renovation was taking place, or if, as a new library is being built, if that's a choice. And the current library could be repurposed, and this is listed here, including as a dedicated branch library. And because of the unique partnership, a broader, broader pool of potential donors could be interested in supporting the new library, and a site on a college campus, this is a downside, a site on a college campus may be a deterrent for some library users.
In what way was that conclusion reached? In, in what way would, was that conclusion reached?
Um, some people wouldn't wanna fight the, if they're, just having the experience at Palm Desert, some people don't like to fight the parking issue, if there's a parking issue.
So, it's parking mainly?
Yeah. And I would assume that this library would be located on the perimeter of the college campus. It wouldn't be that you would wa, have to walk, park and walk, uh, into the center of campus. But, I don't know. I just--
I, I have seen two examples, one being, um, in Memphis and one being in Fort Lauderdale, where the community college had co-branches, branches. In Memphis where I worked, um, I will tell you that it was inside the campus, which was a big deterrent. People just couldn't park and walk into it and it just wasn't a very convenient. Eventually, they decided to make that a completely a, a college, uh, branch and remove it from the public library branch. Fort Lauderdale, it's, it's right at the parking lot. So, if you pulled into the parking lot of the community college, there is parking particularly for the public library branch. So, it's, it's been a very successful model. As a matter of fact, I think I had shared an article that was written by a very well-known librarian about their experience when we first met. So, that's, that's one where they, they still have it to this day.
And just one of the, the points, the library could stay in its current location until the new building's completed. That'd be true for any site that's--
Right.
That's not there.
That's not a reno.
Right.
Except for the current library.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
It's not a renovation.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
Everything that I noted was dependent on the library being on the perimeter. Because if the library was located in the interior, any, any of my comments would be wrong and they would--
Thank you.
And checks mean yes.
Thank you. Glad you gave me that. I assumed.
And, um, I wanna just briefly note the, the current library could be repurposed. I think that makes a lot of sense, although it doesn't really make as lot of sense for it to be a branch library, being so close to--
I, I agree with you.
Is there any, is there any precedent or is it totally out of the realm of possibility that you might break up the program of the library? I know we're not talking program, but for instance--
Good question.
You might have more adult and young adult focused, uh, collections and programming at a new library and maybe the existing library could be devoted to children's. I'm just throwing that out there because I agree, it's too close to be a branch, but maybe you divide it up program, programmatically.
That's, that's an idea and, um, the, yes, maybe, uh, the--
It's not totally crazy, you know?
It's tricky when a, when a, a family has a child and a teen.
Yeah.
And where do you, where do you go?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I was gonna say exactly that. For me, from my experience, I would take my kids to the children's side of the library, let them find a book and I would go find something I needed. And it was wonderful that we could both do that at the same time.
Right. Yeah.
Me too.
But then maybe, uh, like, like we talked about a couple days, was it just a couple days ago? That, about Riverside, how that library became repurposed and is being repurposed into a museum.
Oh, that half of it is?
No, the Cheech, the entire--
Oh.
Riverside Main Library--
Oh, yeah, yeah. I'm sorry, I thought you meant, uh, Palm Desert, excuse me.
Oh, no, the Palm Desert, when, when COD moves out, I think they'll take over the entire building and build themselves a larger community room, because they're, they have trouble with community--
So, it'll become a 40,000 square foot library.
Which is, was gonna happen before, but it had, just, that never happens.
Anything else? I hope this has been helpful as best we can, so.
Do you have an aerial of the site?
Yes, you can, yes, sir. Come, come join us.
Jean, could you put up an aerial of the site?
You should probably sit down.
Yes.
Uh, one thing, one thing I was wondering, and it would come up because of the discussion today, uh, talking about if the city finished construction of the library in the next, say, two to three years, but College of the Desert didn't start construction on some of their buildings after the fact, how much is that construction going to impact the operation of the library? You have to keep that in the mind.
Absolutely, it's a great ques, that's, that's a great question and I think that would have to be under the consideration as well. I mean, there is gonna be an active business on that corner. I mean, I don't think Jack in the Box is going anywhere, so there's gonna be construction all around it. I know that's not a library, so please don't quote me as saying I'm comparing the library to Jack in the Box. But, uh, the Camelot is gonna be in existence, the Cultural Center is in existence on one corner of that lot. So, I think that that would be something that we definitely wanna consider, um, with the construction around it, how do you manage to keep a library program going, yeah?
Okay, I brought up Google Maps and this is the block right here.
It's a huge piece of land.
The new developments are right across the street, yeah.
And there's the high school.
Right here.
Down, down below.
And it's gotta be a recent one because that development just started--
Right.
Vibe, so that's gotta be a recent flyover from Google.
And the library is over here, the current--
So, that really suggests where you would wanna locate it on that site, to me. The high school--
But by Ca, by the Camelot Cultural Center.
Maybe on the, on that corner--
Yeah.
Farrell and, and Baristo.
I also have experience work, working next door to a high school at Cathedral City. We are the bathroom stop and parking lot for pickups at 2:30 every day when I work there.
And other things too, I'm sure.
So, being right across the street from a high school is, is tricky too.
But, I mean, one thing about this particular site is we all know, it's, it would be surrounded by much more, um, homes development than their current site, correct? I mean, you've got--
Yeah.
You've got--
Let me zoom out.
A much more concentration of, of homes around that particular site. Would you all agree? I mean, not to say that that corner is not gonna be developed someday, but it clearly is in the middle of the, those, those neighborhoods.
I think you asked, there is a question on here about, um, location near retail and stuff, so that's something to consider.
Well, isn't, what's happening with the Palm Springs Unified, unfortunate Assistant Superintendent isn't here, but they're at Farrell, aren't they at, um? They're-- Yeah, they're at the corner of, the, the old office. It's right there, so, you know, that's something that could be changing or, um, does any, do we have any--
What is that facility used for, Craig?
Would you be willing to come up and speak?
It's the parents', parents' center as well as there, so, parents needing, um, assistance with tutoring, with all kinds of things. It's a multi-use building, but it's, a lot of community outreach is done from there.
So, it would be complimentary, it sounds like, to a library being nearby then?
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Okay.
And I'll tell you when, I just thought of this, when we were meeting with our consultants about six years ago, we had a teen focus group and we were asking teens, how do you, how do you get to the library from, uh, the school? And, um, we assumed that they just walked down the street and they told us, no, they go out the back gate and they go through the park.
All right.
And they go down to the library that way. So, I thought that was an interesting tidbit of, uh, information that we assumed, one thing and then they told us something else.
Bicycles and skateboards. Yeah. Any other thoughts from anyone else on the committee about this site?
Just, maybe the last thing is, in addition to the pickup, uh, that you, you mentioned pickup and drop off and kinda getting great. Baristo, just that pickup, um, and drop off is pretty, pretty busy and, you know, gets very dense and so--
Yes.
Even though Farrell moves very quickly and Takwitz moves very quickly, Baristo, um, at the start and end of school does not.
Mm-hmm.
Which I assume would only get worse with COD.
We are right with COD.
So, shall we go through the criteria and see how this measures up?
Ed, I have one more question. Did they say how many students they expect to be at that campus at COD?
Uh, let me see.
Cause I have in my brain a number of like 3,000. Does that sound right? In a ballpark? Because Naomi, you make a good point about the student density and the traffic.
I was trying, I'm trying to remember from the state of the city yesterday, the development that's gonna be on Farrell, like, you know, on the other side? And I can't remember if those are one of the developments that are supposed to have like mixed retail as well.
That, that does not, I'm on planning commission. You're talking about on the other side of Farrell?
Mm-hmm.
No, no retail, it's all residential.
No, I'm sorry, my, my, my sources do not share--
Okay.
How many students they, it might be on their website though, I mean, we could do some research real quick, but--
Yeah, I was just curious. I, I feel like--
Or in this piece here, either does it.
I feel like there was some mention in the past that they were anticipating about 3,000 students there.
I think it's gonna be an amazing program.
Oh, yeah.
I, I can't, the, I, I can't imagine it being anything less than that. Just from the-- That's how much they serve every, all right. So, let's, let's go through our criteria and see how, how the College of the Desert measures up, is that okay? And I--
How do you wanna handle Kathy's, do you?
Do you, do you want to?
I'll just plus, if it's a plus, I'll count.
All right. So, um, our criteria, number one, is site is highly visible from the majority of directions as one approaches the facility. I think that we've got one, two, three, four, what, almost five, five major arteries that this is centered, so would you--
Again, all this is dependent on contingent on us being able to pick the site within the larger site, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. So, do we feel that this site meets that? I'll, I'll raise your hand if you do. Okay.
Six.
Site has no extraordinary logistical considerations.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, I, I think that's probably a, does anyone feel that it meets that or do we have a no on that one? A no on that one. Site is on or immediately adjacent to frequently traveled streets and roads on the way to and from where people in the service area reside and or work. I think that I would support that definitely. Do I have, okay?
Got it.
Easy entry to and exit from the library parking lot to main roads and side streets leading to main roads. Now, I will ta, I never use that as a mall, so I only assume, did anyone use that as a mall?
Oh, yes.
So, was it easy to get around?
Yes.
Okay, well, I, I would support that.
But when it was a mall, it had access points on every side. Now, if we're gonna have a library there, there might be, there might not be access on all sides depending on what the college does.
Yeah, good point. Does that persuade anyone to say that it doesn't meet that or can I get a vote for the, if you think that it will be easy entry and exit? Are you, no?
Correct, I'm a no.
And?
Okay.
Because, uh, it depends on where the library is located. For example, if the site is chosen to be on Takwitz Canyon, due to the, uh, volume of traffic, it may require a traffic light--
Mm-hmm.
--to make that full determination. And the, the same could be said for, you know, parts of Farrell.
So, um, we can't change the criteria, so we can put this down as, uh, four of us, yes, one, no, how does, and then Kathy?
Five, yeah, Kathy's, yes.
And bring this up into deliberations and see how it weighs, is that fair now? I agree, thank you. Thank you. Control left turns into major traffic lights, so you guys look up there, I mean, I, it, once again, depending on where the site is, right? Left turns to Takwitz, left turns on Farrell, left turns on Baristo, so I mean, I think that we would have left turn controls, right?
Well, I, I don't, yeah, I don't think, I think that's a no. I mean, let's, but I, see, this is the problem, it's all contingent, right? Because it seems to me with the amount of traffic that's gonna be generated going into and out of the whole site, the college, et cetera, there's probably gonna be a controlled access point, other words, a light, uh, stoplight.
Okay.
So, probably there will be, but it's an unknown.
So, how about, let's, let's pause here for a moment. Yes, ma'am.
There are two lights. You have one on Baristo and you have one on Sunrise, Sunset.
So, for the TV, she's saying that there's a light at Sunset--
One, two, three.
And then there's one down here at Baristo.
There's four lights right there, yeah.
Yeah. So, we do have lights.
I think the question, if it's not at a corner, right?
Yeah.
If it's somewhere in the middle of the block, they might need an entry.
Yeah, we--
Problem is, we're, we're kinda shooting in the dark.
Yeah.
I live in the neighborhood.
Yeah.
I physically, excuse me, I physically live in the neighborhood and as a result of that, we can't even get a light at Luella because of the ongoing addition of traffic. So, getting left out of the neighborhood is very difficult.
Can you point to where that is on the, on the photo?
Where I live?
Well, where you're talking about is a difficult--
Can you, can you use the microphone so that it's on recording?
Yeah.
Thank you.
I live in the Sunmore neighborhood.
Just go ahead and point over.
Let me bring it up here.
Luella, I think, is right there to your right, isn't it?
Oh, let me see. Here's Takwitz Court Apartments, uh, here's City Hall. I live right in here. Okay, so, bottom line is getting out, in fact, here's Luella right here, I live right here. So, getting out of, onto Farrell is really hard to go left, it's close to impossible.
Yes.
Coming out of Luella is very difficult. City Hall is going to put a stoplight on Civic and they refuse to put one, um, on Luella. And with all the added traffic here, it's become very difficult. So, I don't think they're gonna add another light is what it amounts to, because it's another stop. So, if you're considering the in and out, it's gonna become more difficult.
Thank you.
It's not an easier, um, I'm sorry.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's just a, it's an incredible problem we're having in my particular neighborhood.
Okay.
And City's Hall solution is they're putting a light on Civic. Here's LCOO, they're putting a light at Civic so that police department can come out and, uh, so the police department can get out, but for us to get out, it's really hard.
Okay.
Even though, and you should know, the main exit for the vibe, this whole complex is on Baristo also.
Right, right, thank you.
It's not on Takwitz. They have one on Takwitz, but it's on Baristo.
Right, okay, thank you.
So, the traffic flow--
Thank you. So, could we, we keep running into this, so maybe we should resolve it this way, if the committee would entertain this suggestion, is that as we go through the criteria, maybe we should state upfront that we're voting, assuming that the ideal site is selected on this piece of property. And, and if you're ready to say what that is, we definitely could put that down as our recommendation. Once again, we, we have no guarantee, but we, that way at least we're clarifying why we're voting this way. So, for example, we could say, we're voting this site is highly visible from the majority of directions as one approaches the facility, as long as the site is selected to provide as long as the site is selected to provide that, right, on this piece of land, instead of us guessing where it might go. Now, we we could at this point, if you feel strongly, we want the corner of Farrell and Baristo and and stake it on here, but I'm not so sure that we would end up with that. However, if we did that, and they came, the city came back and said, sorry, that you can't do that, then that could null void our recommendation, should we go there? Am I making sense? Is there some way that we could clarify a little further for us, so that our votes are tied to a particular place on the map, I guess is what I'm trying to say. Juanita?
I think that would be, I think that would be very helpful for me, because I am having a hard time looking at this giant piece of land and going, but what if it was here, but what if it was there? And if we're gonna make a recommendation of location, then we should do it
For a location.
For a location, an exact location.
Yes, ma'am.
My, in principle, I completely agree, my only stipulation, and I feel like I've had a lot tonight, is that we didn't do that for Sunrise, and that there's lots of options at Sunrise, and we left all on the table. In in terms of like a new building, where in the park, or if it's a reno or an ex- or expansion.
But I think at Sunrise, you could say, site is on immediately adjacent to frequently traveled streets, that's would be true wherever the expansion at Sunrise would be.
Right.
So I I think there's less uncertainty for answering these criteria for the Sunrise site than there is for this site. Site is
I don't disagree with that, I'm saying it was still, we didn't narrow, there are possibilities with Sunrise, and we didn't narrow it down.
No, I I understand that, clearly we didn't, but I think we were able to evaluate the site without knowing exactly where, if we're gonna expand, and exactly where we would expand. I think the criteria, we could evaluate the criteria without knowing that. With this site, I don't think we can evaluate the criteria without knowing something a little more specific about where we're, where we would propose.
I would add to Michael, we knew that it would be somewhere within the corner of Sunrise and Baristo where we currently are on that current site. So we we knew that we couldn't be where the stadium is gonna be, or where we would be, where the pool, I mean, we knew it would be somewhere in that general area when we had our discussions, right? Block G, clearly we know where that, that's a piece of land that we looked at last week. I think that would we, would you feel better, or would the committee feel better, if we said, assuming that the site would be the corner of Baristo and Farrell, these co-true, and if and if it were to be somewhere else, we would want to revisit this criteria, I mean, we could do it that way.
For me, I, like, looking at the matching, the alignment with the area, Farrell and Baristo makes a lot of sense with the school and the and the school district and, but that is with like zero information around traffic. So it'd be hard for me to say, I think, this corner makes the most sense when I'm like not a developer or a construction person, or have any of that context, even though I I wish that's true.
I I also think this, that site would benefit from proximity to the cultural center, because right now the library, as Jeannie said, does do a lot of co-programming, and I think it would make a lot of sense to be close to the Camelot. And I think in terms of parking, it's not really a conflict with the Camelot, because most of their parking takes place after library hours. So it's like, if there's a concept called coparking, I think, is the name of it, where you look at the time of use, rather than just the the gross number of spaces.
Well, the other reason I think, and I'm not pushing this corner, please, but the traffic patterns are pretty much established on that corner. Point is well taken, that if we were to go to Sunrise and Takwitz, that traffic pattern is nowhere near as heavy as we see right there. So I don't think that we would be impacting the traffic patterns on this corner versus that corner, or maybe even Takwitz, I'm sorry, Sunset? Sunset, excuse me, Sunset and Takwitz, or the, I don't think the Jack in the Box is going anywhere, I think they've agreed to let it stay, so I don't think that corner is an option. Yeah, so I don't think that's an option.
Yeah, they own it.
I think they did buy it, but they're letting it stay.
They're landlords of Jack in the Box now.
Yeah, so, and the cultural center is not going anywhere. Assuming that we wanna be on a corner, and we wanna be on the perimeter, which is what, you know, Kathy put down for her, maybe that's what we should say, is assuming that we're on a perimeter of this land, this criteria makes sense, that, maybe that's better than us picking a particular place in the dirt at this point, would that make more sense?
And I I just wanted to add one thing, and I know, I'm I'm sorry to keep jumping in, but
No, sure.
When we were talking about the site for, have kind of been thinking about it for a long time, is it, is it not, is it, is it not? We kind of talked about the ideal site would be on the northwest corner at Sunset and Takwitz, because there is a stoplight, and the building would face north, and for libraries, that's a great thing to face north here in the desert, because our book return, we had to, we had to put in a hundred thousand dollar sunshade to cover our book return, because the LCD screen turns black in the sun, and it's a silly thing, but if our building has a northern exposure entrance, then there are things that help us with our with our heat exchange, and that was just something that that came up. And and as far as visibility for the city, the library would be visible from Takwitz, which is the corridor that is more traveled by tourists and visitors and
I'd say even more than the other ones, Takwitz is more traveled than Farrell and Baristo.
Yeah, yeah, so I mean, we would be in a more visible location.
Farrell period, I think, you know.
But I don't know if COD wants that, but that was where we thought it would be a good location for us, because it has the stoplight, it has the the northern exposure, and it has the visibility on Takwitz, and it's
So once again, once again, we're saying that if the building is situated on the perimeter of this piece of property, to be determined, right, we could run through this criteria, would that, would that make the voting a little bit easier? Maybe not exact, but it'd make it easier, yes, sir?
I think it would make the voting much easier, and then I also think we should press forward with what Jeannie mentioned in terms of the their site selection, because they've done homework on it, and it makes sense.
The Sunrise
Right, that northern exposure.
I I think we need to talk about that in the final session, as, you know
Absolutely.
Because I I I have some, I I'm not totally convinced, and I don't need to go into the points, but I'm just not in total agreement.
So for tonight, let's agree that we're gonna vote on basing this as a perimeter, and we deliberate, and maybe we we agree that when we, if College of the Desert seems to be our preference, I think then the conversation definitely could be, we recommend this piece of property on this lot to be the ideal spot, would that, would that be okay with you? Everybody else? Okay. So, assuming we're gonna be on the perimeter of this piece of land, control left turns into major high-traffic streets, I think that's, I think that's a given, right, we're on the perimeter. Did you get that one?
Yes.
On public transit routes, with library being within safe and easy walking distance, we know there's, I think, it's surrounded by bus stops, right? Yeah, so that one, I would vote, say yes. Safe pedestrian and bicycle access, I would assume because of the proximity to the high school, that's a given as well, but I don't have kids in high school anymore, so I look for any of you to pipe in there. Okay, so raise your hands that support that one. Site considered safe for the general public. Anybody know anything about this area?
Well, I'm wondering, yeah, right now, it's safe, because
Nothing there.
Nothing's going on there, but would 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 there be a perceptual issue with certain residents if it's part of a college? I'm just asking that question.
I think that might come later, I don't know, to me, I don't know if that would impact site considered safe for the general public. If college students are gonna be there, wouldn't it be safe as well if we're gonna have, right?
Go for it.
Okay.
Plus the police station, will be
Yeah.
Oh, that's right, police station's a block away, right? Location accessible to all populations served. Once again, I didn't know it is a mall, so you guys have to help me there. Mixed-use developments combining retail, residential, and office spaces are up between for locating libraries, so we know, we know we've got the retail, I'm sorry, the residential. We have office spaces on Takwitz, I don't know where the retail would be.
Well, the COD campus, right?
Correct, you're right, yeah, yeah, so
Well, what's the, what's the retail on the campus?
Bookstore, restaurant, yeah, they're building a restaurant and a hotel.
Kathy voted no.
Yeah, I'm gonna say no on that.
I will vote yes from that one, so yes.
Donald, yes, okay, so two, no.
Adjacent uses the complement of library in terms of function, peak use times, and so on, I will vote yes, because it's a block away from the one we have now, so, or two blocks, right? Lot size large enough to accommodate outdoor library uses. We don't know, I'm I won't have to vote no on that one, because I don't know where we would be, but I could, I would say that would be a criteria that's important to us, right, should we go there?
Yes.
So we'll just
I wonder if COD would be interested in some outdoor space that's communal both the library and the campus, right? Like, I'm sure they're gonna have some outdoor study
Yeah, commons.
Yeah, outdoor commons and an amphitheater, so I I I kinda see it as, I'm sure there's an outdoor space in that giant lot somewhere, and if it could be, you know, closer to the library, as opposed to needing completely separate.
So I would say that this one
We don't know.
In deliberations, we probably revisit and say that it would be a criteria that we would need.
So did, so what is your answer now?
Right now, it's a no.
Kathy voted yes.
Okay, so one
Anybody else voting yes? No, just one, okay.
Lot size is large enough for ample parking and drive-up materials returns, well, it would have to be, I think that's another one that we don't know. We could say no to that, but it's a criteria that has to be met. Ooh, this next one, lot sizes
Wait, I know, so we have
Does anyone support that one?
Kathy did.
Okay. And unfortunately, she didn't get to hear this conversation we had, so she may change her vote. Or Tracy, right, or anyone else?
You demand it, I think you just say
Yeah. We can, we'll revisit the ones who are descending in, when we have our our deliberations. Lot size is large enough for future expansion.
Kathy put a question mark.
I would say we won't know.
Right.
I mean, I I think that College of the Desert's gonna use every inch that's not used by us, right? So I would say that's a no, anyone in favor, think this, okay. Solar energy potential, ability of roof to be oriented toward the south, isn't there already across the street, doesn't the high school use solar already? Right, okay.
Donald, yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Potential for partnerships with cultural and educational organizations, cultural center's right there with it, right, so I would say yes. Co-location with complementary government entities, recreation centers, parks, community colleges, fire stations, et cetera. Joint use library facilities between public libraries and community college libraries, or all the preceding criteria are present. Absolutely. Now we're in our Palm Springs specific ones. Is this site appropriate for a central main library building? It's a block away from our current one, so I I think it would be hard to argue that, do you, are you agreeing, disagreeing?
I'm saying the site is appropriate for
Okay, thank you. So thank you, I'm sorry, it's been a long day. Site allows for building a destination or attraction.
You know, I think with the film festival and and the Camelot, absolutely.
Yeah, we'd definitely be in that campus with the Rogers Center and
Oh, definitely.
Yeah, okay, so I would say, I would support that one. Any opposed?
I.
You wanna say why you oppose, maybe talk to us about that?
Just one or two opposed?
Go ahead.
Well, at at the moment, I'm slightly opposed, because when you talk about destination library, I get certain things in in my mind mentally, and I'm thinking about the architecture, maybe style, in terms of, you know, material design, and if this is on the same, and I'm hoping that, and I know we're not doing the build of the facility, but I'm thinking that this library, in terms of being a destination library, should be our crown jewel, or a crown jewel of Palm Springs. And so I would want that architectural firm to use all the creativity that it takes to come up with that design. And so that's what I'm thinking about, so if you put that on the campus, will it, will we have that freedom to place such a building and not have it look awkward, for example, you know, one of Frank Lord Wright's famous building, Falling Water. You know, that's, it's a beautiful home, and so I would want our library to be this beautiful, but then I know in terms of, you you can't have Falling Water in Palm Springs on Palm Canyon, so that's my only reservation.
I, yeah.
It's green. Yeah, I I I see what you're saying, and I agree with that analysis. In addition, to me, the site speaks to a central library for the community, not a destination per se. And so that's why I would vote against it.
That's how I feel, I think it's a prime location for students and families who live here or study here, but for people who are traveling here, with the exception of the film festival, the film festival's a really good example of, there's a lot of people in that area, but I think there isn't people hanging out on that side of Takwitz or Farrell.
I think this is, this is a perfect example why we do this, I think you have persuaded me to say no, because would it get lost in that campus? Because we don't know what those buildings are gonna look like, right, I mean, we don't. Could it, could those buildings overshadow or not complement that at all? It could be a possibility, so I think I'm gonna change my vote to no. Juanita?
Well, I just, I just think that the design of the library is going to speak volumes, and I think that wherever that design, wherever that design is, you know, however that design is is come up with, wherever it's placed, if it is amazing, people are going to find it, they're gonna look for it.
No, I I don't disagree with that, I think people are gonna find it, but we're we're being asked to evaluate a site that could be, that that would be a destination site. So it's kind of exclusive of what the building ultimately looks like. We're looking at the site, and to me, that site doesn't say, this is a destination site, that's that's all I'm saying.
Yeah, I I understand that, I I understand that, but I feel like if we have the crowd from the film festival there, and it becomes kind of a hangout afterwards, discuss the movie kind of thing, or, you know, meet up, or, you know, that's that's what I'm
Okay.
So I have, Kathy said yes, and you said yes, and then
Rest or no?
Okay.
Site is appropriate for a building that preserves Palm Springs' architectural heritage.
COD can preserve architecture.
Saying no, anyone in favor of that one?
Kathy said yes.
Okay.
Yes, no?
It could be if it's the right, right, yeah.
So is that the same, two yes, four no? Okay. I'm the recorder.
Site alliance with city's vision of for Palm Springs, clear that they're building there, and it's, I think they probably have gone through that, so I would say yes. Site is enhanced by the surrounding environment, learning, yeah, college, the high school, arts, right?
Donald?
I would just like to hear maybe just one or two items that you feel enhances the
The site?
The environment?
Right, by the surrounding environment.
I mean, from my my vision would be, we could see there, like, an education arts complex emerge from those blocks there with, you know, high school, college, cultural center, library, it's, it really does kind of create a synergy of education and learning, I mean
Okay, thank you, I'm so
That's just me, anybody else, please jump in, I mean
No, that's that's fine, you know, I just I was struggling with, you know, trying to make my determination, and it was just hard for me to come up with something, so I see your point, thank you.
And and I I had a thought about this, I mean, all these, all this youth, I'm an old man, all this youth, would that deter older citizens from going to library? I think no, because I go to the Rogers Center for performances, and Palm Springs speaks, I go to the cultural center, so everybody goes to that area at some point to to participate in the arts, right, so I don't think that you're gonna exclude anybody from that. What about parents? I mean, obviously, I mean, parents, well, they have the high school there, right, so
I mean, I think it would be ideal, I think that anything that parents can do to motivate their children to higher education is gonna be, they're they're gonna want it, yeah.
The the question, you made an interesting point around seniors and and kind of older residents going into spaces that are, you know, predominantly like young students, and I think it makes a lot of sense for, that there's, for events, right, but I think there's, what Ed was saying, that he goes to the art center, and those are kind of like event-specific participation and attendance, that's different than kind of like daily attendance, and just feeling comfortable and welcome in that in that space or in that environment, so I don't know if that changes like the calculation of if people would be open or comfortable going on a more, on a more regular, ongoing basis, rather than event-specific.
That goes along with what I was saying earlier about, and maybe it was in the wrong criteria about safety, like, would older people feel comfortable going on a college campus for the library function? I don't know, I mean, I'm an older person, it wouldn't bother me, but I don't know.
I'm gonna
It's not something of safety, but just more of
No, I know. It's a perception, it's like, are kids out of control today?
As someone who lived in San Francisco for many years, so you you know, you go to Civic Center, and you may have a special exhibit at the Asian Art Museum, or you may have something going on at Symphony, the library would program around The library would program around that sometimes. So you could imagine the library having during this weekend, which is cinema diverse, an exhibit, you know, around that to get people while they're waiting to see a film to come in and see something. So I, I, to me, that would be kind of a natural marriage to a cultural center, right, to draw people in. It just means the library has to complement those things and offer, you know, an alternative, yeah.
Right. I think it needs to work like in a symbiotic relationship with the surroundings, so it feels cohesive and welcome to everyone, rather than kind of separate spaces sharing a block.
Yeah, like, I mean, they do that for modernism already, for example.
Right, right, right.
I'm not talking like you're not in the room, so forgive me. But, you know, it's, it, I think that's that complimentary, here's another option to come in.
Yeah, I think I'm imagining more like of bodies, right? So if it feels like there are people of all ages, all the time, every day in this space, then I think it, there's no issue. I think it's a matter of like, oh, there's this event, or, you know, this thing that doesn't happen very often, and now there's different types of residents coming into this space. I think that's my hesitation, but if it's, I, I agree that if it, like, the programming is done right, and I'm sure that's gonna be the intention, that would be an ongoing occurrence.
If we have an amazing event center in that library, can you imagine during Film Festival, having it host films, receptions, you know, special, I mean, even galas, I mean, it's potential. I mean, it could become kind of another place or destination, so.
Would the city allow the library, and this is just, you know, projecting out into this non-existent future, but would the city allow the library to rent out a function room like that?
We do it now.
Do it now.
Our main room is available for rentals. Desert Eight's project rented it for.
Beautiful reception there.
Beautiful event, and, and we've had, we did a film festival event in partnership with Film Festival, and brought Emilio Estevez over to the library afterwards.
And we rented the space to the festival?
Uh, no, we used that for ourselves, so that didn't count, but we have done rentals in the main room. One thing I wanted to mention, since, um, since we know the experience of College of the Desert at Palm Desert, people, that is the second busiest library in the county library system behind Temecula, so people do come. And one of the partnerships that we did, I thought of this, um, we started chefs at the library, because they have the wonderful culinary arts program, and we called Chef Benno, and we said, chef, would you come do a chef program? And he brought his culinary arts students, and they, you know, when you go on a cruise and you see all the, the food carvings, and they did this humongous display, and they did cooking demonstrations, and his students, who are now chefs out in the community, come in. And that program's been running for a million years now, and it's because of the partnership with COD. So, um, it's very, I think, I, I, and some experience with Riverside County, they do have partnerships or multi-agency facilities that are in high schools, and those don't work out so well, because people don't like to go into the high school library. You know, you've got teenagers that are everywhere, and then there are seniors that don't wanna deal with the, with the rowdy class visit. That's their time too, and then they had different times. The library was only open a certain amount. So there was like a lot of negativity with the high school public library partnership. But college, um, public library partnerships are, are okay, I think, as far as experiencing.
That's really helpful, thank you, especially the, the usage of Palm Desert, I think.
Yeah, it works, it works out okay. Just the biggest complaint is parking. And then the McAllen Theater is right there, and then they do the, um, the COD Street Fair on the weekends, so a lot of people go on campus.
There's a street fair there too.
You know, I feel that, that colleges and libraries are like churches. You know, they're like hollowed ground, like sacred places. I think that everyone feels like that. They, those things belong to everybody, and they feel welcome. I've, I mean, that's my feeling, and, and a lot of people that I know, you know, oh, you know, the college, the library. Those are always, you know, places that, that everyone's welcome, or I've always felt welcoming.
So, uh, site alliance with the city's projected development, I think, did we vote on that one?
We didn't vote on the one before. I don't have a vote recorded for site is enhanced by surrounding.
Oh, surrounding environment. Site alliance with the city's projected development.
Almost done.
Site is appropriate or accessible for part-time city residents.
Oh, wait, we have a, we have a line that didn't carry over properly, but it's site is priority accessible for city residents. Is that?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
Sorry, excuse me. I skipped over.
And Kathy didn't vote on that one, because she didn't see it either.
Site is a party or accessible for city residents. Uh, for part-time residents. Tourist. We had this discussion last time, remember, about the, how did we do, I, I hate to cheat, but how did we do on the main site, on the current site, when it came to that?
Three.
Three to five. We were split on that one. And it's just up the street, so do we feel like our tourists are finding their way? I think you had the.
Kathy said yes on her vote.
You spoke to that, didn't you, about tourists finding their way to Sunrise and Barista?
Well, I think it's even less likely for them to find, if we're assuming, Tackwoods, uh, well, Tackwoods maybe. I don't know. I, I, the, this part of the city sort of Sunrise and East does not speak to me as a tourist destination, so I'm gonna say no.
Unless it was on tourist, and everybody rode by it going down tourist at the hotel section of town. You know, they wouldn't buy it every day on the way to the airport.
Well, you.
You gotta leave.
Well, then you're, then you're gone.
Okay, so, um, this vote for, the site is appropriate or accessible for tourists. Okay, two?
Kathy said yes too.
Three.
Three, two, three.
Site is accessible from all areas of the city. I think so. Yeah, it is. City has controlled the property. We don't know. Um, I thought I heard, but we, I will have to say, I don't, we don't know on this one.
Kathy said no.
Okay.
Do you, what, what's your?
I said we don't know. Don't know, so I think it's a no at this point.
Okay.
So we, they, they can prove us wrong by saying the yes they do, or whatever.
Actually, uh, in our very first meeting, I questioned Dr. Reddy about that.
And?
And he said no.
Okay. I thought he said yes, so I stand corrected.
Because he said, we have three sites we control, and I said, we control the COD site, and he said, no.
Okay.
That one's on TV. You can go check, you.
I'm sorry. Well, site encourages social interaction with teens, seniors, and special populations. I think we talked about that. Oh, okay. And site will accommodate a building size of one square foot per capita. We don't know, so.
Kathy said yes, so I'm recording her vote.
I mean, we can make it a requirement, I guess, as, as we have with all the others, right? We pretty much said that if that's what we want, that's what we're gonna put there, but we're not convinced we need that big of a building.
So how do you want to record this?
That last one?
Yeah. We don't know.
Don't know. I'd say it's a question mark.
Recording hers is a yes, and then the rest don't know, right?
Wow, that wasn't, um, as painful as I thought it was gonna be. I think we're, we voted to postpone the next one. So we're, we're not gonna go into the next one. Um, we're actually, we did good, guys. I appreciate again, and I, I hope I'm not wearing you out. I have, we, we're, um, let me let you know that looking at the schedule, uh, Janie and I are going to, we've gotta tweak the schedule, because we're looking ahead at the end when we've got to do the final report.
We do need to ask this. We should ask it now, if we can, at least get some information.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Last.
Sorry. Um, so our next meeting on the books is October 3rd, here in this room, City Hall Large Conference Room, 5:00 PM. So it's a little earlier start time. Um, the plan is to discuss options four and five, so be ready. Bring a snack. October 7th on Monday, here at City Hall and Large Conference Room. This is the deliberation and recommendation site of site. The situation in this room is that it's not available until 6:00 PM. So I feel like it's important to be recorded on TV and be on TV and have it, even though it's a later start time, are you all okay with that?
Is this the only room that records?
The situation is that, um, there, this room and City Council chambers are recordable, but they only have one recording station, so they can only record one or the other. And this room has AAC Architectural Advisory Committee, Advisory Committee in here, and they're booked until 6:00.
They don't, they don't last that long.
They have five things on their agenda. They're, they weren't sure.
Did you talk to Flynn?
I did. He said he has five things on the agenda, and he's not sure.
Well, planning mission, they always kick us out at a certain time.
Well, they, they reserve the room until 6:00.
Yeah.
So I, I didn't, I didn't wanna promise an earlier time if, and I, I know that people want to attend, and they wanna know.
I agree. I think the deliberation meeting is critical for us to be in an area where we can have the public with us, and we can be recorded for posterity, and if we forget something, we can go back to it, because we've got to compile that report pretty quickly. And in my mind, the deliberation, um, I'm thinking that we'll come together, we'll revisit our scoring, and either one, and I've asked the consultants to make a recommendation. By the way, I'm texting them, that's, I'm not making dinner plans, but, uh, they're still listening to us, by the way. Is that we would either try to find, is there a site that we just want to eliminate from the very beginning? Because there could be. We might discuss it and say, this site just isn't gonna work. And then start prioritizing, prioritizing the other sites and revisiting our scoring, and addressing the ones where we don't agree, uh, to find out why we don't agree, and is, and how important that criteria is. I'm saying that because in an ideal world, if we start at 6:00, I think that we're gonna be here for a couple of hours to go through that, so I'm just being, you know, upfront. But the good news is, is getting near the end of the process.
Is that the last meeting then?
It's, it's almost. Now, City Council has, um, has floated an idea that I need to share with you all, that they may request a joint meeting with us, where each of you can represent what you feel from this process, and why you, you've put forth your priorities. Because they feel it's important for the hard work all of you have done, for you to maybe speak on your own behalf. And so that may happen. I don't know when that's gonna happen, but that could very well pop on our schedule. And it's pretty similar to the Measure J, the Measure J joint meetings. So they're thinking that it might be a good idea to have City Council be able to look at us across the table and say, why, why do you think this site is the best site, and so you could have your set, so, uh, to complement the report.
I have one more date that we're talking about. Um, so on October 7th, you do your deliberations, then we go back and draft a report and recommendation, and then on the schedule, it's listing October 9th as the building committee reviews the draft report. Do you want to have that as a meeting, or do you want to just read it? But we, you were thinking, some people were thinking it needs to be a meeting.
So I, I don't think we're gonna come down in two hours from five options to one with our recommendations, all on the 7th. I think that it'll either be a really late meeting, or it'll likely take two meetings. So I don't know if that means we just come, you know, that those meetings are very thorough, and then we just review the report prior to meeting with City Council and not have like a meeting together with the report. But I, I just, there's a, a lot here. I don't know if we're gonna get through it all on the 7th.
Our challenge is that the City Council staff report is due to, um, the city clerk and the city manager by noon on October 10th. All, for that, for the October 23rd, City Council, all staff reports are due October 10th at noon. And so we have to at least have our rough draft, and then I'm out of town, and so we, we, we're up against a hard deadline in that.
So I guess point of clarification for you, Janie.
Start the draft.
If, if we, if we have pretty much made a, a recommendation, and we are, it's a matter of, of creating the staff report, do we really need to meet to review that staff report if we have put our recommendation together in, in, in person? Could that be a report that all of you read, and it's more of a, make sure we captured your thoughts and your recommendations? Is that, is that something we could do?
I feel like that's how it was designed, was that it wouldn't be another meeting. You would just, we would send it to you, and you all would read it, and maybe provide feedback.
Three, three options, you know?
Yeah, and I think that was also the thing that you wouldn't, you might not come up with one that's a standout, but you might have a preference one, preference two, preference three.
They, they have asked for a, a ranking, whether it's one, or two, or three, or five. Is, which, which do we have in order of our preference, so that they can make that decision?
Would the joint meeting be before City Council meets on the 23rd? Would it be a separate date?
It would have to be, you know, and that's what I don't know. I will ask again, but it, time's fleeting, and so it could be that, yeah, it might be at some point, they would have a special meeting before that to meet with us.
And I, I, I don't know if I'm cutting anybody off. Like, I guess my, um, community participation is contingent on consistent expectations, and I think changing times, new meetings, like, that's really confusing for residents. And so, you know, and I know you guys are just like the liaison between this and council, so I'm not saying that, but I think it's really important that if we're, if we're saying we're prioritizing community feedback, we get all the dates down, that we communicate all of those, that we, City Council tells us, yes, we want a joint meeting, it's at this time. Like, we're just a few weeks away, and so I think it's a great idea to have that, but I, I don't think it's fair to say that we're doing community meetings if we give only a week notice.
So, um, and I agree with you. The, the challenge that we really have had is trying to nail down a consistent place to meet. I mean, this is the perfect place, but it's just not available for us to nail that down. I have another, my trustee had, I have to go ask a question on behalf of the trustees, because the trustees would like to see this report as well, uh, naturally. So I'm gonna ask City Council how they want to incorporate that, if, maybe at least a review. That's, that's really not of our concern, since we're, anyway, I'm gonna ask that request, so I will ask that as well too. But I, Janie is trying to nail it down, uh, so that we don't have these things moving, so my.
I just want, you know, we're, we're representatives of you all too, right? And so we wanna make sure we're, I don't know. I was at a Measure J meeting, and it was last Thursday, it was the Thursday before the new sites were added, so I like gave a full summary, like, this is where we're at. It's like 12 hours later, I was like, oh, man. But, but yeah, you know, I appreciate all the residents that have come so much, and so I wanna make sure we're.
I, I love that part of it. I mean, that's, we wanna hear as much as we can from everyone, and, and as we've said over and over again, contrary to popular belief, I, I announced to the trustees, no decisions have been made whatsoever. We're nowhere near close to that. And I think it's really important to hear what the community has to say about it, and, uh, so, yeah, I, we're doing our best.
Are we gonna take public hearing on the day of deliberation?
I, I don't know why we wouldn't. I mean, I.
Just for time.
Yeah, I think that we may have to ask, like, we had, please keep it to two minutes, because we have a lot of work to do. But, um, I think it would be a chance for, for those who, and, and so many people are keeping up with us, so they would be able to come in and say, after hearing the deliberations, may I say, please do this? Or, you know, I'm making my plea, my plea for this particular site. So, you know, I think that's, that's worth us listening to, don't you? Yeah.
I think that's fair. I think that's very fair.
Yeah. And by the way, I, I, I really sincerely think that once we make our recommendation, it goes to City Council. City Council, they are trying to vote their last meeting, which is early November. I can't imagine that during that time, there's not gonna be more opportunity for the public to speak there as well. So it's not like that the, the, the decision is shut down. So they will listen to that probably even more so based on our recommendation. Makes sense. Okay. All right, guys. Uh, thank you all. Uh, we stand adjourned at 6:40, and we'll see you on the 3rd. Not this Monday, but on the 3rd.
October 3rd at 5:00 PM.
Yeah, thank you.